Good evening. Welcome to the monthly business meeting of the Mayor and Commission of Athens-Clark County. Welcome both those of you who are visiting with us in the audience tonight here in the chamber and those watching us remotely from their computers or TVs. We really appreciate your time and interest and that you care enough to be here and interact with us. If any of you would like an agenda, those of you that are here, they should be on the table just to the right as you exit the chamber doors there. And for those watching us remotely, you can get an agenda at athensclarkcounty.com. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device tonight, please turn them off or to silent. There'll be three opportunities for citizen input. The first one is on our consent agenda, which are items one through nine. The second will be items 10 through 12 as under old business. And there'll be one final opportunity at the end of the meeting that any citizen can address this for three minutes on any item that's not on the agenda. The rules of commission allow citizens three minutes for comment. There's a timing clock on Ms. Bratton's desk, which will turn yellow at two and a half minutes. And I ask that you please have your comments completed before the light turns red, so there's no need to interrupt you. And I urge those of you that are here, I know there's some passionate folks here on maybe more than one item, but please do not demonstrate with applause or boos or any other demonstrations because everybody needs to have the same opportunity to speak. And if there are people here that have a different opinion, they may feel intimidated if there's a lot of applause and a lot of demonstrations for one side or the other. So please be respectful of your fellow citizens and let them have their say. And again, please, let's don't have any demonstrations. If you brought handouts tonight, if you'd hand them to Mr. Barryman, he'll make sure we get them if it's something that you'd like to share with us. And before we start our meeting, I would like to introduce Mr. Drew Wrestler, who is our new Public Works Director. Drew, would you come up to the podium and introduce yourself? And if you have anything you'd like to say to us, this is just our official welcome to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Drew Wrestler, the new Transportation and Public Works Director. I'm excited to be here. I have been here for a little bit more than a month now. And in that time, I found a group of professionals at the department that are passionate about what they do, very good at what they do. And I'm excited to be part of that team, to be a part of a community that cares so much about transportation and all aspects of transportation, all modes of transportation. So look forward to participating and being part of some of the wonderful things that we have going on here in Athens-Clark County.
Thank you, Drew. We're probably gonna work you to death, but welcome.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
And again, before we actually start our official meeting, I promised some of our voter registration staff that I would remind the public, and I wanted to do it first while there were more ears listening, that we only have three days left for early voting. And I'm gonna tell you where those places are so that if anyone would like to early vote, it'll be tomorrow through Friday at the Board of Elections office, which is on Washington Street, just a little ways down from City Hall here. And that's open from eight to five, Monday through Friday. Of course, now it's Wednesday through Friday. At City Hall in the lower level downstairs, that's open from eight to five, and that will be the last three days of the week. Athens Regional Library at 2025 Baxter Street will have the early voting from 10 to 5, Thursday through Friday. So I hope that all of you will take advantage of your, one of your most precious rights and responsibilities and vote. We will now begin our business meeting. Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll for us?
Dickerson.
Here.
Samms.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Bailey.
President.
Neesmith.
President.
Bell.
Here.
Harrod.
President.
Gertz.
Here.
Handy.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any written communication? Okay. Items on our consent agenda tonight, which are items one through nine, have been reviewed by the agenda team, which consists of the Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, the Attorney and Senior Management staff, and are recommended for approval. And they will be voted on under one vote unless a Commissioner removes one. This is the time that any citizen would like to speak to one of these items, items one through nine, would come to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us which item you're speaking to. And please remember our three-minute rule. Anyone wish to speak to any items, any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Would any Commissioner like to remove anything from consent?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to remove items one and nine, just for a brief discussion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Well, we're...
One and nine.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do we not need to approve the minutes first from the last meeting?
We do. Ms. Harrod, thank you for the reminder. Do I have a motion for approval of minutes?
So moved.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for taking care of that for me. Okay. We will now accept public input on our old business, which are items 10 through 12. So anyone who would like to speak to one of those items, this is the time. And again, please refrain from demonstrations in fairness to all the other speakers.
Mark Bell, 120 Cypress Manor Lane, Athens. I'm here to speak about the anti-discrimination law that is being proposed for Athens-Clark County. The SGA report that was turned into the government was quite an eye-opener for many in the Athens community, but was not for many others. It is my understanding that the question proposed to students was along the lines of, have you ever felt discriminated against at downtown bars? I've read the comments numerous times and completely understand why the report was turned over to the government and why the government feels a need to pass a law aimed squarely at bars, which ironically enough would be legally discriminating against bars. However, if the question would have read, have you ever felt discriminated against in any business in Athens, Georgia? The answers could possibly include bars, but would have probably also included drugstores, clothing stores, restaurants, grocery stores, et cetera. If negative answers would have been given in that report, would you be writing a law that only targets those types of businesses? I don't think so. My point is that if you ask a narrow question, you'll get narrow answers. Discrimination is everywhere in this town, and its citizens need to be protected at all types of businesses. Last Friday, I sent out an email to Madam Mayor, all the Commissioners, the County Attorney, and the County Manager that contained a link to the City of Atlanta's non-discrimination laws. The reason for sending this information was to let them know that a law could be written that would legally cover all the businesses in a city. The law that is being proposed only pertains to bars. I asked all the recipients of this email, why can't Athens have a law like this? I have in my hand a stack, and this is for all the Commissioners and everyone behind the rail. I also have a huge stack in my hand. And Madam Mayor, can I leave these on the back? Or can I leave them right here for people to pick up? This is for the general public.
Absolutely.
If they'd like to... I have in my hand a stack of copies of the City of Atlanta's guidelines of their ordinance, which I will make available to all the people sitting and standing behind me. For those at home, please Google "Atlanta discrimination ordinance," and it should be at the top of the results. I know the Commission feels a need to pass something as soon as possible in order to calm the waters, but passing a law that is aimed at roughly 5% of the types of businesses in the county is irrational. In the words of Spike Lee, "I'm asking the Commission to do the right thing, and please take the time to consider a law like Atlanta's that covers all of the citizens of Athens wherever they may go."
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And I just want to add that General Borgard, which was the bar in question that kind of kicked off this entire thing, has been sold and is under new ownership. So those owners are no longer here in town.
Thank you, Mark.
Just leave these here.
That's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
All right, Mark, if you'd like to, you can leave them on the table out in the hall if you want the public to have access to them.
Okay. Well, I just figured a lot of people come speak, they can grab one.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine.
I'll leave them on the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We are, and it's my oversight, so I thought we'd just wait because we've got two that have been taken off temporarily, and then we'll vote them all together after we finish this comment. Thank you for the reminder.
It might be a while. Hi, my name is Tony...
I made myself a note because I feared it was gonna be a while.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Tony U. Banks. I live at 785 North Pope Street, and I'm here to address item number 11, the pedestrian improvement projects that have been proposed. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the work session a couple of weeks ago, but I did send you comments. I like everything that was proposed. I hope, Commissioner Harrod, that by not including the overhead beacon, we saved $20,000 to pay for your Cedar Shoals Drive crosswalk. I think it's great. I've gotten a lot of good comments about the things on Millage, the crosswalks on Millage. I think that's really, really wonderful. But I watched last week's work session, and it seemed to get kind of acrimonious about funding some of these things. And I understand there's a limited amount of money, and we can't all get what we want from the budget that we've got. But I do think that when we do things, if we spend a little bit extra to make them a little bit better, we're better off in the long run. I think from my perspective, last fiscal year, you guys approved $265,000 for pedestrian safety improvements, and it's the first money that you had approved for that purpose specifically that I know of in the last five to seven years. So we're playing catch-up. And now we've got another $144,000 proposed in fiscal year '17, and it seems to, it seems like maybe we don't have enough money budgeted for these things, the way that people are fighting over the scraps of it, you know? But particularly, I wanted to talk about the pedestrian island on North Avenue. That's a gateway into Athens. And I think that making that, and Madam Mayor, I think you said something about adding a little beauty would be a good thing. I think that when we got so many people coming in from out of town to come to work in Athens or come shopping in Athens, and they're riding on these roads that are really kind of speeding roads, we need signals to say, you're in a different place. Welcome to Athens. Please slow down. And I think that something like that pedestrian island as proposed on North Avenue would be a good thing. I think it'd be a good thing for Lexington Road. I think it'd be a good thing for Prince Avenue. I think it'd be a good thing for every one of our corridors, just to let people know, you're in a different place. You're not on Jackson Highway anymore or Jefferson Highway anymore. You need to slow down. You need to pay attention to your surroundings. And we, you know, that was one of the main recommendations out of Kappa 14 years ago, was let's put an entranceway, a gateway entrance there. And I think if we can get that for a reasonable amount of money, that's something that's well considered. And again, it's not just, I'm here advocating for North Avenue, Madam Mayor, and for Lexington Road and for Cedar Shoals Drive. I think that we need to take a look at this, and I can't wait to have a bike pad master plan to help guide some of these decisions in the future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tony. Yes, all of our roads belong to all of us, so thank you.
My name is Aaron Josselin. I live at 305 Willow Run. I've lived in all different neighborhoods in this town, from East Athens to Gaines School Road to Five Points, and now I live in Normal Town. And one part of any time that I go downtown or anywhere on Prince Avenue and I come home, I have to take a left-hand turn onto Oglethorpe from Prince. And it's a very narrow lane, and there's no bike lane on the side of it. And if it's any sort of traffic, then there's nowhere I can go that a car can pass me and not run into a car in the oncoming lane. And a lot of people get impatient, and they want to pass me, and they'll drive around the curve in the other lane of traffic just to pass. And the bike lane starts after the curve, maybe 100 yards up the road. So anytime I'm on that stretch of the road, it's extremely dangerous for me and any other biker who uses that corridor. And I think it, there's certainly space to put a bike lane in there. It would require money to be spent and some things to be removed, but it would absolutely enhance the safety of all cyclists who use Oglethorpe Avenue and Prince Avenue corridor as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and the Commissioners, good evening. And believe it or not, I'm a little nervous because I did not prepare.
And tell us who you are, O. B.
Okay, that's a good start. I'm Avita Thornton. I'm 170 Fowler Drive, and I am going to be speaking on issue number 10. I got a call, I got an email yesterday, late last night about this issue. And really, it was not my intent, because of my schedule, to be here tonight. But after going to Reverend Killian's funeral today, I just felt like I am bound to say that we do need to address any kind of discrimination in Athens. Unfortunately, legislation does not legislate love, and that's what we're talking about. But everybody at one time or another have experienced discrimination of some sort, whether you're female, male, short, tall, you know, blond-haired, you know, everybody, sexuality, and nobody should be discriminated against. So I don't know the process because I have not been keeping up with it, but I just know that this community wants to set a good example for the world because nationally, our politics are wrecked. We are being hit with all kinds of negative, just, I'm just kind of numb now with this political election. And I think that this Commission has the power to send a message and be an example to everybody that we're going to do the right thing in Athens, and everybody's going to be treated fairly. So again, I feel a little bit in the dark because I really haven't kept up with this like I should. But I do believe Reverend Killian did speak to me today at that funeral, and I do need to come here and say that we need to do whatever we can to make sure everybody is treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Y'all come on forward if somebody's leaving if you want to speak.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Valentine, and I live at 370 Cleveland Avenue. A good friend of mine this week in talking to me about how I speak to the Commission warned me not to lecture and preach, and I will certainly try to follow their example or their advice. And I'll fail immediately because I'm gonna just start with a quick story. One of my favorite professors, when describing the policy process, explains that if you have three people who can't see approach an animal, and one grabs its tail and says it's a horse, and one grabs its leg and says it's a tree, and one grabs its snout and says it's a snake, only the person who can see understands that it's an elephant. And I've been thinking about that a lot as we've been getting ready for tonight because each of us have our own blind spots. Each of us see part of the picture, and it's easy for any of us in this room to assume we know what's going on in each other's heads or hearts or off-hours, what works being done behind the scenes, what intentions there are. And so it is with that sense of good faith that I want to once again say the same thing I said the first time at the podium months ago, which is I know we have a good group of Commissioners that wake up every day to do the right thing in a non-glamorous position that is not exactly a lucrative position. And I just am reminded, so many of you have told me your stories about why you started, whether it's telling customers at Provino's that you're gonna start running for office or it's starting a food bank because you see the need. And all of us are the same way. We see a need, and we're trying to address it. Tonight, I have instructed my friends here that we should each speak no longer than 30 to 60 seconds apiece with respect for your time. What we are gonna do, though, is to share some brief snippets of some success stories that civil rights committees have had around the country. Several of you in letters addressed to people during our letter-writing campaign have suggested honest, earnest questions about what the value of a committee like this is and how it can work without violating state preemption laws. So we focused on the educational and advocacy effects of these committees around the country. We think that you'll be as excited as we are with what you see. Hopefully, you'll be able to take some of those ideas with you, as you said, about the difficult but important task of developing what the Athens Civil Rights Committee looks like. We thank you so much for hearing us. We know that not every city government allows for public input like this, and that there's a thin line between public input and public nuisance. We will try not to cross that line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy.
Good evening. My name is Phelan Lavelle.
Excuse me, if y'all need to, you can push that microphone up, make it a little easier.
I'm Phelan Lavelle, and I'm with the Anti-Discrimination Movement. I live at 480 Nacoochee Avenue in Athens. And I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because, to be honest, it's moderately embarrassing that there's not one in place already. You look at the lists of so many smaller towns and counties that have committees like this in place, and it's not a radical thing, it's a reflexive thing. And I have faith that all of you will do the right thing and let the municipality reflect how great Athens is and how cool the people here are. One example is Carbondale, Illinois. The Human Relations Commission there organized small groups called Study Circles, and they address issues of relevance improving human relations in Carbondale, including the Carbondale Conservations for Community Action and Neighborhood Action Group, which could really stem off and be a lot of neat things for different communities and neighborhoods in Athens. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lavelle.
Good evening. Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Sean Walton. I live at 130 Churchill Circle in Athens, Georgia, 30605. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because it affects every aspect of my life. We all know that the battle for change is fought in the trenches, so I'm here to lend my voice to this movement. We humbly ask that you consider that Nashville, Tennessee's Metro Human Relations Commission recently sponsored an action summit, Restoring Justice in the City, in partnership with local churches and educational institutions. This conference allowed participants to strategize about new initiatives for restoring justice in the city with guidance from local leaders working for improvements in Nashville's prisons, courts, police departments, legislature, schools, and more. Completed a study on city and school workforce representation that revealed dramatic underrepresentation by African-American and Latino workers and disproportionately high wages among certain demographics, prompting immediate action from Nashville's local government to increase diversity by the local government. We can make things happen if we listen and we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Good evening. My name is Darren Ellison. I live in 288 Ryan Road in Winder, Georgia, but I am from Athens, Georgia. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because, just because it's simply been proven how much of a good difference that it makes for all of us to work together for one common cause, to give everyone their God-given right. One of the demonstrations that we would like for you to consider is Winston-Salem, North Carolina Human Relations Commission, Human Rights Relations Department. It educates, provides, facilitates, promotes, anticipates, studies, and recommends programs, projects, feedback, and actions for the elimination of discrimination in any and all fields of human relationships. And it also earns a grant to being the Building, excuse me, Building Integrated Communities, BIC, Latino Migration Project, identifying needs and gaps in services to the immigrant community. And the goal of the BIC community is to undertake a needs assessment and create a one-stop-shop to have resource manuals in key areas of the city and county with higher concentrations of immigrant populations. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Elrod. I live at 2505 West Broad Street. I'm a board member of the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, and I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I'm sick of seeing human beings who are not inferior to me get publicly humiliated because they don't look like most of our local leaders sitting here tonight. And as you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, I would like you to consider Providence Road Island and what they're doing with their Human Relations Commission. They actually do a lot of good for their community. For example, they promote and facilitate positive relationships between diverse groups in the city through outreach, education, and training. They also offer fair housing training for landlords, which is designed to inform new landlords about state and federal fair housing laws. They even host an annual community breakfast focused on recognizing important acts of service and communities at need. And I have been trying to get in touch with the Commissioner for my district to discuss this vote tonight, but I have not heard back. I'm really tired of fighting, but I won't stop, and neither will these people behind me. If this doesn't pass tonight, we're gonna continue to fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tyler Dewey, 1075 West Broad Street. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I think it will help lift up the community and to stand in solidarity with everyone in this room who also supports the ordinance. As you develop the Athens Civil Right Committee, we humbly ask that you consider Clarksville, Tennessee. Their Human Relations Commission provides resources for small businesses that wish to understand how to avoid workplace discrimination or how to respond to accusations of discrimination. It further created a five-year diversity action plan designed to ensure that the City of Clarksville is proactive and effective in fostering inclusion, respect, equality, and well-defined opportunities for a culturally diverse community. Areas of focus included city employment, cultural awareness, procurement and training, and partnerships and visibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Good evening. My name's DeShawna Johnson, and I'm with the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. I live at 255 The Preserve Drive, Athens, Georgia, 30606. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because as a queer black woman, I am familiar with discrimination in general and in Athens, and I would like to make the community more welcoming for people like myself. As you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, we humbly ask that you consider the Normal Illinois Human Relations Commission, which works to actively promote better conditions among all persons with respect to housing, employment, recreation, health, and other quality of life services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Christine Malazi, and I'm with the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, and I live at 411 Oglethorpe Avenue, 30606. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because although you cannot legislate people to be nice to each other, you can be on the right side of history and create a community-based committee to honor the upstanding values of the classic city. And there are many. We hope as you develop this committee, you will consider Kirkwood, Missouri, who does something as seemingly simple but super complicated in this world, as a human rights essay contest, where they ask 11th graders to participate and consider, what can I do to foster human rights in our community? As a taxpayer and a mom, that seems so simple to do, but to put it in words and to commit on paper seems amazingly brave. Please be just as brave as those 11th graders.
Thank you, Ms. Malanti.
Good evening. My name is Irami Osae Frimpong, and I live on 475 Brookwood Drive. Now, I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because the committee would eventually address the way that black-owned businesses are structurally locked out of the economic life of the city. As it stands, I suspect that more money originates in Athens and flees to Oconee County than originates in Athens and goes to black-owned businesses in Athens. Now, that means we are de facto subsidizing white flight. And look, if people want to pay for white, and that's fine, but I don't think that our county should subsidize that with our contracts and the way we do business. I actually think that Athens-Clark County should make an intentional effort to get city contracts to Athens-owned, black-owned businesses and use board and authority power to make licenses such that private businesses and the university do business with Athens' black-owned businesses. You might not know this, I studied the numbers, but descendants of slaves are generationally poor, and descendants of slave owners are doing markedly better, especially with respect to how they get contracts. We have a politically contrived problem that will only be redressed by a responsive government. And I hope that the people in this room are up to that charge. Thank you.
Camille, before you leave, give us your address, and would you spell your last name because I didn't get it?
My name is Irami Osae Frimpong. I-R-A-M-I, and my last name is Osae Frimpong, capital O-S-E-I-dash-capital F as in Frank, R as in Ralph, I-M-P-O-N-G.
Okay, and your address?
And I live at 475 Brookwood Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? Still awake there? I'm Deborah Brenner. I live at 135 Gibbons Way, Athens, 30605. Hello, Sharon, you're my Commissioner, aren't you? Nice to see you. We've communicated some email. I've communicated with a bunch of you on email. You probably see my name and say, not her again! But I support the Athens, and I'm with the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, and I support the Civil Rights Committee, maybe even a commission, as Jerry Nesmith was thinking of, because I believe that this will enhance our great community's efforts to... efforts to reduce oppression and discrimination. You see, I'm wearing Standing on the Side of Love. I'm a Unitarian Universalist. This is a great movement to harness the power of love to stop oppression. We're not a violent group. We're a very peaceful group. We just want to make things better for people who have not had it as good as some other people. And I want to let you know that Tulsa, Oklahoma, has a Human Rights Commission. And maybe you're getting bored about hearing about all these other cities, but the truth of the matter is, they are doing things that we can do. You have the potential of creating these things in this great community. We have a great community, but we can make it even better. Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
Hello, I'm Carol Myers. I live at 310 Spalding Circle. I'm an Athenian. I raised two daughters here, and I retired recently from Athens Tech, where I taught a great diverse range of students from Athens and the counties around Athens. I am supporting the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I want everyone, including all those students I had over all those years, to feel like Athens is the best place to live, like I do. I'm only going to tell you one of my three points about the Gwinnett County Human Relations Committee, and that is that they recommend to the Board of Commissioners legislation and programs to advance civil rights and equal opportunity. Thanks so much, and thanks all of you for the work and support and listening to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Hello, everyone. Hello to the Commissioners. How you doing, Nancy? You're looking beautiful as ever.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you guys for all your time working on this, considering this. I know you've been taking it home, thinking about it, letting it marinate, and I appreciate all that. I want to tell you a little bit about Austin, Texas. I think you guys have probably heard about Austin. They have the Austin Joint Inclusion Committee. They help to advise the council on issues pertaining to diversity and inclusion. They work to develop the recently opened Equity Office, which addresses the lack of equal representation in the city government, and currently working to help develop and implement Imagine Austin, which is a 30-year plan that lays out the vision of how they would like the city to look and feel in the next 30 years. And I think you guys maybe, I think I heard rumors are planning something like that. If so, you know, please let the citizens have, you know, involvement or implementation on things that they think will help your long-term plan in making the city feel more inclusive. Thank you for your time.
Noah, would you give us your address, please?
I'm sorry. Noah Johnson, 651 Lakeland Way, Athens, Georgia.
Good evening. My name is Celeste Ngavie. I reside at 218 Lucas Way, Statham, Georgia, 30666. However, I am from Athens, Georgia, and I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I'm an educator that teaches children, that they're amazing. And it's very disheartening to think that they're with their mothers and fathers in any business in Athens, Georgia, and they don't feel equal. They don't feel like they can do anything that we teach them that they can do. So it's almost like I would just like you to help me, help me, help my students understand that what we tell them they can be, which is anything, is realistic. If we tell them that, and they go places and they don't feel comfortable, they don't feel safe, there is nothing I can tell them about that their feelings are wrong, if that is what they feel when they go into some of these establishments in Athens-Clock County, as they do come back and talk to us about. As you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, we humbly ask that you consider the amazing things that are being done in Gilbert, Arizona, where they're communicating accurate and respectful information in order to educate the community on the town's rich cultural heritage and promoting equality and unity. Education comes back so much, and if we don't think about anything else other than our opinions, we have to think about those of our little people that watch as big people do some ugly things or some beautiful things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ngavie.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Brown, and I live at 501 Southern Court, Athens, Georgia, 30606. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because as a product of Clark County School District, also a product of Gainesville State College and University of Georgia, and a current educator, second-generation educator, and a member of Ebenezer Baptist Church West, where Reverend Killian first started preaching at, I was a child under his authority, as well as his wife. I worked in a nursery with her as a child. I have always experienced doing the right thing. And one of the things that Reverend Killian always preached about, and it was talked about today, is if something is not right, you have to speak against it. And so I'm here today to speak against this and make sure that everyone is inclusive. As a student at the University of Georgia, I have been in downtown Athens. As I said, I'm a product of Clark County, been here all my life, and I have seen some things that should not have happened. Nobody has said anything to correct it. You read things in the newspaper, "That should not happen." So I'm here to speak about that, and I ask you to consider some of the items that were done in Marion, Iowa. They produced and distributed a series of informational brochures on topics such as "Know Your Rights," overview of the complaint process, fair housing rights, service and companion animals, and mediation. They offer educational services for landlords looking to update their policies to avoid discrimination, or they worry about fraudulent discriminatory policies. We need to get this in action. It is very important for our community. It speaks how volumes of our integrity if we go ahead and implement this process. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Hi, my name is Richard Banton, and I live at 397 Bridgewater Circle, and I am with the Athens Antidiscrimination Movement. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because as a person who's lived in this town, I've normalized the product of discrimination or discrimination itself in a way so it didn't bother me. And I realize that that's not the right thing, and the political climate around me has compelled me to move forward and try to change that. Now, one example we should look at for what we would be doing or what the Civil Rights Committee would be doing is Palo Alto, California. They have a Human Relations Committee, and in addition to resolving conflicts that people bring to them, they conduct community-oriented programming, which has included workshops on ending chronic veteran homelessness and on domestic violence. We've had the conversation here. We've talked about it for months. We need action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banton.
Good evening. My name is Judy McWilly, and I'm with the Athens Antidiscrimination Movement, and I live at 430 Highland Avenue, 30606 in Five Points. I wish to pay tribute to Reverend Killian also, who passed this week. As a hero of our city, be we white or black, he is our ancestor. Commissioners, as a hero of our city, he is yours too. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee. As you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, we humbly ask that you consider an annual custom in Terre Haute, Indiana, which is a Human Relations Commission annual banquet, which brings together 200 members of the diverse communities of the city to celebrate those who work behind the scenes to create a city that is inclusive. Remembering Reverend Killian's foundational work and the brilliant new leadership we have today, let's move forward. Let's pass the Athens Antidiscrimination Ordinance and have a Civil Rights Commission. The success of the sticker campaign shows that entrepreneurs and business owners are ready for this. Use the talents of all of our citizens and expect gratitude, enthusiasm, and collaboration. Expect new life and inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McWilly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Mary Miller, and I live at 240 Terre Way in Forest Heights. We've talked some about why we need a Civil Rights Committee. I want to elaborate on that a little bit more, and I'm going to draw on a study that was done a couple years ago, and you may have seen its TED Talk. Paul Pith had people play Monopoly together, but at the beginning of the game, one player had a distinct advantage, be it twice the money as another player or exemption from the rules. And almost inevitably, those people with advantages won. That's not so surprising. What is surprising is that when they were interviewed afterwards, they attributed it to their skills. Not only did they acknowledge that they had been given advantages, they seemed to forget that those advantages had existed. And for many of us in the room, be it gender, or ethnicity, or religion, we can ignore the advantages that we've been given, but if you lack those advantages, you will run into circumstances that make them all too clear. We need this commission to help us get through those thorny issues. And I want to mention something that gives me a great deal of hope. Earlier this year, I had the privilege of listening to an oral history from an Athenian, a woman named Benny McKinley, who as a teenager in Athens, she's African-American, helped to desegregate the varsity. And her story is a wonderful story, but the thing that gives me the most hope about it is that the young man who collected this oral history, a graduate student at the University of Georgia, is Alexander Stephens, a descendant of the Vice President of the Confederacy. If that young man can celebrate the desegregation of the varsity by an African-American woman, there is hope for all of us to get further than we have so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. I'm Kate Blaine. I live at 145 Three Oaks Drive, 30607. I also support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I find it inspiring, and I like to be inspired. And what a cool idea, deal, that our government would represent fairly and understand all of our citizens. So to inspire you, as you develop this committee, I'm going to tell you about Louisville, Kentucky. And they have a Metro Human Relations Committee, and what they did is they produced and promoted a jury selection process and what it means to be a citizen. And through this, they support community building and citizen participation. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Blaine.
Hello, my name is Ashley Nah. I'm at 270 Cobb Street.
Excuse me, Ashley, what's your last name?
Nah, it's just N as in Nancy, A. So, yes, so I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Athens Civil Rights Committee, and I am here as a representative of Real Food UGA. I do some work with Athens for everyone, the city, and myself. There have been times where I go into, where I would work in this restaurant, and more often than not, I would have days where the only time I saw another person of color was on my bathroom break in the mirror. And to me, that's not what love looks like, and that's not what Athens looks like. And I'm hoping that this will be a step to returning the love that I feel for this city by starting with some production. And where there is some love felt is Annapolis, Maryland, where they have already successfully established a Human Rights Commission. And they not only make recommendations to the mayor and city council for legislation, but they also have some documents that promote fair housing practices that are well-crafted and then easily accessible for people to know their rights in the housing market. And this also shows differentiations between federal, state, and local law. And they also created a report on responding to hate groups, which just helps citizens understand best practices when responding to hate crimes and acts of hate from different people. So, yeah, I'd like to see something like that in Athens. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Wilks, and I live at 260 Springdale Street, Athens, Georgia, 30606. I'm also here on behalf of Real Food UGA, and I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because as an organizer for Real Food UGA, we know that food justice is racial justice, and we cannot start to consider the question of how can we ensure nourishment for everyone in our community when we cannot ensure basic human rights and respect for everyone in our community. The Athens Civil Rights Committee would start to do just that. As you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, we humbly ask that you consider the Rutherford, New Jersey Civil Rights Commission already in existence, that works to eliminate discrimination, increase public awareness of civil rights through advocacy and education, and providing information referrals. They also do things like hold an annual all-ages collage poster and essay contest with topics such as "How We Make a Difference," and hosting a Rutherford multicultural festival, which encourages cross-cultural encounters through international food, dance, and music from all around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilks.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Hool. I live at 260 North Chase Street, and I am here as a human to speak on item number 10. I was really glad to hear that General's closed, and I hope it's the first of many businesses, bars, or otherwise, to do so in this town. So, on item 10, most of us, I think all of us know, and all of you know that there are different CDOs floating around. We don't know which of them you plan to pass. Might be the one sponsored by Mr. Herod, Ms. Wright, Mr. Sims, and Ms. Dickerson, or it might be the one that's sponsored by the folks who were standing with us outside earlier and who have been standing with us all year, Mr. Gertz, Ms. Link, Mr. Bailey, and Mr. Neesmith. Whichever version it is, it's just the next step. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done after. I'm here to ask you to also, and I'm thinking of Mr. Mark Bell's comments here about how this is not just about bars. And right now, you have an opportunity tonight to make it about more than bars. You have an opportunity to make it better and stronger tonight by eliminating the exemption of restaurants from the ordinance, which would also make it simpler. So I look forward to seeing a CDO that includes that, if possible. We all do. Recent tragedies in our community highlight all too well that we don't know what's going on in people's lives, even when they're up here at the podium, the love, the loss, and the struggle that is complex and ongoing. The Athens Civil Rights Committee will help us do that. As Confederate bars change their ownership and aesthetic, it's important that we know that they've changed their behavior as well. I believe Tommy Valentine's piece in the paper talked about how the work began here with a resolution earlier this year, and it's true that it did for you all with that resolution. But for the people on this side of the rail and all around Athens, we have known these problems too well for too long in too many ways, and many of us have lived it our whole lives. We know on this side of the rail and outside this building what needs to be done. We know that you need to amend tonight's proposal on item 10 to mandate the creation of an Athens Civil Rights Committee. And we also know that you need to simplify it to remove the exemption for restaurants. And we know that you need to pass this damn thing. But after that, you need to create the ACRC, because that doesn't happen tonight. And you need to do it in a way that is expansive, engaged, and effective. So we know what you need to do, and you know the same things we know. So we look forward to seeing you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Good evening. My name is Maria Marquez, and I live in 235 Hill Street, Apartment 2, Athens, Georgia. And I am new to Athens. I just moved about two months ago from the state of Delaware. And the first thing that I noticed the first two months that I have been in Athens is the lack of diversity in downtown, in all the types of restaurants, in all the types of commerce that is there. And it bothers me because I come from a state where I will walk around and see a lot of diversity, and I don't see that in Athens. And it kind of bothers me because it's a university city. So where are the Latino students? Where are the black students? Where are they? Because I don't see them. And it bothers me that the only time that I see Latino students or Latino individuals is during a Latino fest. So they're there, but they don't come to downtown. Now I wonder why. It also bothers me that when I go to restaurants, I only see white servers. That's a concern to me. Why is that? I don't think it's a coincidence that Latino girls or Latino boys don't apply to be servers when they need jobs to pay for school. It bothers me. So then I come here, and I'm applying to be a server, actually. I have four years of experience, and I've been applying, and I haven't even got an interview back. But the sign that says I need a server is still up in the restaurants, but they won't even call me back for an interview. That bothers me, and it concerns me. So I'm standing here because I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee, because I need something to be done, because I don't think I'm the only one that has this issue, that has faced this issue. I go to the restaurants, I fill out my applications, and when I go to submit the application to the managers, they don't even acknowledge me. They'll tell a server, "Get her application." And I hear them say that, too. So who did I tell this? That's why we need a Civil Rights Committee, because my voice needs to be heard, and I'm pretty sure everyone's voice around here needs to be heard, too. Heard and acted upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marquette.
Hi, my name is David Ferguson. I live at 140 Harold Drive here in Athens at 30606 in Beechwood Hills. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I was attacked three years ago on the street by a group of men for looking too gay, and I support community initiatives against bullying and education outreach to foster communication and understanding between people who are diverse. And as you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, I ask you to consider... And as you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, I ask you to consider the Human Rights Commission of Scottsdale, Arizona, which acts as an advisory body to the mayor, city council, and staff to make recommendations on ways to encourage mutual respect and understanding among people, to discourage prejudice and discrimination, and to work toward cultural awareness and unity. Thank you, guys, for letting us talk tonight. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening. My name is Amy Yoder. I live at 129 Ashley Circle Number 7, 30605. I'm here to support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I'm a gay woman, and I know we have come so far in past years, but we still have so far to go, and we have to keep fighting, all of us, for our civil rights. And as you develop the Athens Civil Rights Committee, we do ask you to consider Fayetteville, North Carolina, and the Human Relations Department, which promotes equal opportunity and fair treatment for the citizens of Fayetteville. They created and promoted a series of public service announcements on fair housing practices and distributed them via YouTube and social media, which I think is a wonderful idea because the internet and social media is how we're reaching young people and getting them involved in the political process. They also conducted citywide surveys on the Americans with Disabilities Act and found where they could improve to make access for their citizens. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Yoder.
Good evening. My name is Uma Nagendra. I live at 305 Willow Run, 30606. I am excited about the potential creation of an Athens Civil Rights Committee or Commission. I'm excited for that to begin, and I'm excited to continue working with all of you, since we know this is just the beginning. And you've heard a lot of great ideas about what we can take from other places and implement here in Athens. Here's yet another one. Morris County, New Jersey, has a Human Rights Commission. And one really cool thing that they've done that we could also do here is create a response protocol for crisis management for when a cultural issue arises, helping communities that are clashing in a cultural crisis communicate with each other and form a resolution to prevent a crisis getting out of control. That's one thing that they've done that we could do here. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the future.
Thank you, Ms. Nagendra.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Mates. I live at 138 Henderson Avenue, Athens, Georgia, 30605. And I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I work as a lawyer on the east and the west side in Athens, on North Millage and in the Triangle Plaza. And I see a lot of room for improvement, for equality, and I think this commission or committee, whatever it turns out to be, is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, what's your last name? Give us your last name again. I'm sorry, didn't get it.
M.A.T.T.E.S.
Thank you.
My name is M. Ilbert, and I live at 530 Hampton Court A, Athens, Georgia, 30605. And I am a board member for Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. I'm also the president for Daughters for Life at the University of Georgia, which is a scholarship program for Middle Eastern women. I work directly with the founder of the organization, Dr. Isla Dean Abuldash. He's a four-time Nobel Peace Prize candidate and the first doctor to practice medicine, first Muslim doctor to practice medicine in Israel. He specifically asked me, with the Daughters for Life at UGA, to work with the community and to get everyone involved. And it shouldn't really be a shock that there's still discrimination against Jews, there's still discrimination against Muslims, and there's often a lot of conflict in between the two groups. And it should also go without saying that being a Muslim in the United States, now your life is at risk. And I'm just saying that as an outside party, as a Jew, Muslims are being assaulted and murdered. I'm here, there has to be at least one police car in front of Al-Huda Islamic Center during services to protect the people. Muslims on campus have been called Hamas on campus when they stand up for their rights. And a newspaper falsely talked about Athens Justice for Palestine and said that they were making "Hail Hitler" signs, and they wrote that in the paper about Muslim students. I also want to say that this discrimination isn't just religion-based. As a woman, I study plant molecular biophysics at the university, and within my first month here, I was told that I have too dominant of a personality as a woman, and I need to be more submissive to men. And I was sent to the university's discrimination group, and they did nothing. Instead, they gave me a list of therapists and told me I was too emotional. And although this problem doesn't directly affect you, it does indirectly affect the city, because these are the people who are shopping at the supermarkets and frequenting the bars. My boyfriend's a black male, and he was almost hit on a crosswalk. He was followed home by a police officer. He wasn't let into the Silver Dollar Bar downtown. This is discrimination against people for their religion, their gender, their race. I want to say thank you very much for listening to me, because I know I'm one of the last people. And I humbly ask that you consider Shandler, Arizona, the Human Relations Commission for partners with other city institutions, including the police and the Diversity Office, to decrease area discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ruhalah Agasale, and I live at 108 College Station Road, Athens, Georgia, I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because, as a queer person of color, as an immigrant, I've felt pain of discrimination. And as an educator, I believe that there should be some educational resolution for that. And as you all are considering this very excellent cause, I would like you to consider the Palm Springs, California, Human Rights Commission. These are some of the few things that they do. They have two non-voting student representatives on the committee, from Raymond Creek Middle School and one from the Palm Springs High School, that contribute to commissions, dialogues, and outreach. They also organize a series of documentary screenings as educational activities, including films on the rights of LGBT individuals and the origins of poverty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agasale.
Hi, my name is Molly Camfield. I live at 134 Hendrix Avenue, 30601. Thank you, all of you, for listening to us. I know that technically it's part of your job, so you have to, but I appreciate that you are actually listening. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. I was just here to bear witness in hopes that the mayor and commission will do the right thing by supporting anti-discrimination efforts in our town. But as I was listening outside in the back, I spoke with a woman who was standing next to me, and she expressed disappointment that she would not be able to make it up to the podium to share her experiences, as she had to leave by 7:45. I do not have to leave by 7:45, so I felt compelled to come up and just share a little bit about why this is important to me. The woman I was speaking with, she told me that her son and daughter, who don't live in Athens, sometimes feel funny about coming to visit her because of the lack of diversity and the discrimination that they experience when they go downtown. I often say to my friends, to my family, to people in Athens, that my main concern for raising a future child in this town that I love is the lack of diversity that we have here. There are so many other cities and towns throughout the nation that have much more inclusive neighborhoods and downtowns. I hate the idea that people don't want to visit Athens or move here because of our lack of diversity. I hate it, but I understand it. It's clear to me that people in Athens want to work together to progress our town towards a more diverse and welcoming state, and I hope that all of you will help us do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Camfield.
Good evening. My name is Jamaica Patman, and I live at 705 Spring Valley Road. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I believe that better must come. We live in a world full of hate. We live in a world full of greed. But we live in a world where we're created by one God. I mean, look at me. I'm no better than you. You're no better than me. I love everybody. I don't see color. I have many different races in my family, and it sucks to live in one of the beautifullest places and to see people treated with such hate. This is a beautiful state. This is a beautiful city. And I ask that you consider your children's future. I ask that you consider your grandchildren's future, because we cannot raise our children to hate each other. We have to raise our children with love, with respect, with dignity, with pride. That is what I would like to see. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Patman.
Good evening. Mayor and Commissioner Broderick Flanagan, 1645 East Broad Street. I'm very excited tonight, as we move forward and begin to develop some type of ordinance for discrimination, as well as looking to develop some type of civil rights committee or commission. I wanted to start off by saying thank each and every one of you who has put in the time and due diligence for working on this. And I also want to say that I recognize that we are only continuing the work that was started by the civil rights leaders and community activists before us. I don't think anybody in the room would disagree with that statement. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you, or we look forward to working with each and every one of you, to continue that work and to develop a commission or committee that can be effective. You've just heard from dozens of citizens here in Athens of examples all across our nation that are useful, that are effective, and that are working. So I look forward to continue, or we look forward to continue, working towards that goal of justice and equality. And again, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done and that you will do.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Thank you for the many things you already did.
My name is Moka Jasmine Johnson. I'm with the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. For the past several months, myself, Afri, and hundreds of citizens have been fighting for equality, fighting against discrimination, because we know that is bigger than just the bars, and it exists. And today, I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for putting that CDO on the table, Commissioner Gertz, Melissa, everybody that's been working on it. We have been sticker campaigning and going around to different businesses. The Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, a few weeks ago, after marching up there at the UGA Arch, I decided that I'm no longer going to wait for the government to take action, that we were going to take action. So we went out there and we did sticker campaigns, and I got to visit a lot of businesses. And I realized that a lot of businesses are welcoming, but there are still issues. Because when you go to a business and you ask to put up a small sticker that's two by two, that says Athens United Against Discrimination, and someone says, "I have to ask my manager," or "I have to go to the corporate office to ask if I'm allowed or not allowed to put a small sticker up on the window that symbolized unity and that everyone is welcome," there's businesses out there that's done that. There's people that smiled in our faces, took the stickers, said they were going to put it up, and they didn't put it up. There's businesses out here that welcome us, and we want people to learn about the businesses that support us. And I'm not going to just wait. You know, we decided to take action. Over the past several months since January, we've been making the initiative, like, for example, Athens and Harmony on Sunday, we brought black and white community together. I have been seeing amazing things by bringing people together. And we'll continue to make those efforts of bringing people together, because it's changing hearts, it's changing minds, it's helping people to see each other in a different way. And that is why we definitely need some sort of committee, whether it's a commission, like Jerry Neesum said out there. But we need something here for the people, so they can go to. Jerry Neesum said something out there on the steps earlier, and it proves that love. And when you get to know somebody in a different way, your heart can change. Even if you were once a person that discriminated against, once you get to know someone and you're in that inclusive space with that person, barriers can break down. And that's all we're trying to do, is to break down barriers and to bring this community together. Last but least, let me say, the ultimate measure, Martin Luther King once stated, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in a moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." And I want to say thank you to Afri, thank you, Melissa Link, Kelly Gertz, Jerry Neesum, Jared Bailey, for standing with us when it's uncomfortable, for always responding, reaching out to us, to all the citizens that marched with us from January all the way till now, hundreds of people. I've met so many people. I just want to say thank you. Athens is a beautiful place.
Thank you, Moka.
My name is Charlie Maddox. I live at 115 Avalon Drive, Athens, Georgia. I've lived in Athens 70 years so far. I have some more living to do. And this is the first time I've ever really been to a meeting like this, and everybody's for it. I haven't heard anybody that's not for it. So, okay, that's great. You know, I've been up here probably longer than most, not probably, more than, longer than y'all have been living. And I've been fighting discrimination for all of those years. But as we come together, you know, we tell stories about other places. Let me tell you about a place that I know of. They have a Human Relations Council that's been in existence for 39 years, established by David T. Nunle. We have the A. Philip Randolph Institute that's established to deal with that. There are many organizations already engaged, and, I mean, I'm not saying this to be disrespectful. Where are y'all? I need the help. We need the help. Athens needs the help. Every year, for 39 years, we sponsor a MLK banquet where we honor, we've given away over $100,000 to students of Alderman. We hold a youth powwow where we bring kids together and talk about bullying, talk about things that are going on. And right now, I'll just let this out, there are six members of the Athens Area Human Relations Council. And that's not because we've not been trying. So again, you know, I found out many years ago, I came up here and, to say the least, I was not welcome. And you talk about people like A.R. Killian, and you talk about people like Pastor Reverend Mitchell Tate, and you talk about people that were pioneers in this. You talk about Coach Jackson and E.T. Holmes. These are people that came and said, and it wasn't a popular thing. So tonight, when I hear everybody's for this, hey, that's half the battle. Now let's get to work. We don't need to put in a quick fix, as somebody said. We don't need to copy what they're doing in this place. We need to do what's right for Athens. And what's right for Athens is for Athens to come together and formulate what works here. And we need to do that as a body, a body that believes in doing the right thing. I have a saying, and I think a lot of the commissioners know, whenever I leave Athens and I go somewhere else, I was up in Milwaukee, I was up in Chicago, I said, whenever I leave Athens, I feel like my civil rights being violated. Because whatever happens here, and it happens, but I go directly to the source. Talking is fine, but you've got to get involved. Marching is fine. I marched with Dr. King, I marched with Jose. Marching is fine, but you have to get down to where the work is done. You have to show up more than on commission meet night. You've got to show up every day at these places that are doing this and confront them with it. See, you just can't say, well, they doing bad? Let's do this, let's do... No. And no matter what this agos body comes up with, it's going to be up to the folks over here to see that it's done right. And so that's what we need to do. We need to leave here with all of these folks. My number is 706-340-4321. Kind of easy, I'm not smart. Call. There are opportunities every day to get involved. If you see something you don't like, do something about it.
Charlie, your time's up. And you forgot to tell everybody where that community is that has that 39-year HRC in existence that's working now.
It's, go to the website, Athens Area Human Relations Council.
It's Athens, Georgia.
Yeah, it's Athens, Georgia.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Charlie.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark McConnell. I live at 2510 Commerce Road, Athens, Georgia. I am in support of an Athens Human Rights Committee also. And I think one thing that we should take a look at as we go into this is where this discrimination really comes from, where its, where its roots are. And I brought a book with me that I learned about a few years ago when I lived in Madison County, because I was discriminated when I lived there, not for being white, but for being a Yankee. I don't know if you've all been to Madison-
That's a good reason, Mark.
If you've been to Madison County or not, but, you know, they should have a sign that say, "If you weren't born here, leave now." So this book is called Murder at Broad River Bridge. If you have not read it, I recommend it to you. It is only 100 pages. It was written by Bill Ship, who I met with after these things happened to me. And one of the first things he said to me when I was explaining to him what was going on with the sheriff and all this crazy stuff that was going, he asked me if I owned a shotgun. And I said, "No." And he said, "You should go get one. Welcome to the South." So I don't live in Madison County anymore, but I had some really scary experiences up there. And it's not just Madison County. It's not just these places where things kind of aren't the way that they should be, but it runs all across the board. Because, don't forget, the Ku Klux Klan ran shit down here for many, many years. And it hasn't really changed. They just took off the hoods, and they don't call themselves that anymore. But the power structure, I think, of some of this is still here. And I think it's something that, you know, we need to take a deeper look at as we go forward with this. This book is very hard to find, by the way, because every time it gets into a library, someone steals it. So you can find it online, though, and if you'd like to read the copy that I have, I do, you can take it out and bring it back in a week, and everybody can get a chance, because it is very hard to find. But it's a very good read. It was written by Bill Ship. It's about the murder of Lemuel Penn, which happened on July 11, 1964. That was not that long ago. The FBI, J. Edgar Hoover, sent 100 FBI agents down to Athens to find out what just went down. What they found out was that nobody wanted to talk to them. And what happened with the guy who murdered Lemuel Penn, he was set free in Madison County by an all-white jury, and later down the road, he was taken to court here in Athens, and he was found guilty of violating his civil rights for impeding his trespass, his way down the road, not for shooting him in the face with a shotgun. Something to, it's deep, it's scary stuff. But anyway, read the book before you write this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
My name is Michael Smith. I live at 147 First Street. In deference to Tommy Valentine's Thin Line, the city I was going to speak about, I am with the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, was Independence, Missouri. Y'all can look it up online. Human Rights Commission, Human Relations Commission. And they work with a lot of different groups to foster meaningful understanding, meaningful discussion, and meaningful action. I wanted to also talk about a couple things regarding the commission-defying options. I think that both Commissioner Gertz and then Commissioner Sims and Harrod's two ordinances can be integrated together tonight. I think it would make both ordinances better. But what I don't want us to miss out on is Commissioner Link's friendly amendment to encourage public input from the time that we are here now until the time the commission sees the new human right commission as envisioned by the county manager and the city attorney and Athens Clark Unified Government. I think that is a very important thing. At times, this process is, the narrative here has been a little impaired with, with different groups really fighting about things that don't matter. What matters is ending discrimination in Athens, Georgia. I think another thing that we've missed is that in 1991, we created a new body politic in Athens. It's called the Athens Clark County Unified Government. In the charter, in Section 1, they empower that government. I believe I have 1991 correct. I'm going off historical memory. But I'd like to read you the end of Section 1 of Athens Clark County Charter. "The unified government shall encourage the meaningful involvement in its operations of all citizens of Athens Clark County, particularly those who are members of minority or other traditionally disadvantaged groups, as appointees, employees, and independent contractors. No individual shall be denied any opportunity on the basis of race, gender, religion, age, handicap, or national origin." So if we do a commission, whatever the name of it is, we can have the faith that the Athens Clark County Charter, the intent of the Athens Clark County Government, is to do the right thing and fully pursue anti-discrimination measures, dialogues, and actions in Athens Clark County. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm Jesse Evans, 150 Susan Circle, Winterville. I teach government and civics here at high school. Most of my students don't look like me. A wide array of beautiful shades. And I want to talk about things that I have seen, conversations that I've had, when we get to topics about equality. And we get to topics about what life is like here for them, for people that they know. I mean, I'm talking about 14-year-old boys and girls approaching adulthood, 15-year-olds. And by the time they even come through the ninth-grade classroom door, they know that equality is not being realized. They have personal experiences with profiling. They have family members that have come down here to downtown and have been turned away. And it, it's 2016, and it's still happening. I'm really excited about the opportunity that you have as leaders. I'm going to be teaching about local government soon. I really hope that I can talk about you in ways that provide hope for these students, because it's pretty painful sometimes to see the hurt that they experience. I really, honestly, I really hope that you take hold of this moment, and when you leave today, that you know that you've done everything you can to make a positive change. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thanks.
And thank you for being a schoolteacher, too.
Hello. My name is Alpana Venerji. I'm an advocate for women and children in Georgia from last nine years. It's two years I'm in Athens now. The experience that I gathered within 15 years in the United States was a horrible experience that I had. But I never fear about whatever was happening. I kept on fighting, and in my case, I win my case ultimately. The one thing I realize about it is that if you keep quiet, it will grow, keep growing. And this is the place where we can come and express our attitudes, our faith and belief in your office before you. And we humbly request you to take this initiative. I support the Athens Civil Rights Committee because I believe it is very important in this city. I love the city, and I'm thinking my future childrens, they're going to grow in this city. I also want to be in this city, but there is so much of discrimination all around. That's why I started supporting Civil Rights Committee. I humbly request you to take these initiatives, whereas non-discrimination laws, which has been applied in Atlanta, all city of Atlanta non-discrimination laws prohibits discrimination based upon sexual orientation, gender identity, as well as race, color, creed, religion, sex, marital status, disability. The non-discrimination laws are set forth in Atlanta Chapter and Code of Oraance. The city non-discrimination laws applies to multitude of situations, including the city of Atlanta decision and action, employment decision by private employers, housing decisions, decisions about selection of treatment of customers by businesses, decisions regarding potential exhibitors of patterns by anyone leasing the Atlanta apartments, employment, subcontracting, decision regarding sales of alcohol. All these things, which is not here in Athens. They have a lot, they have made, they fight for that, and there is a lot that, which is not here, missing. And I think, like, when my son was in middle school, he used to cry, come back home and cry every single day, because someone is telling something, because he is the only one, I know, with color in the school. So I used to always tell him that, you know, you have to love, you have to love more, more.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So this is the, this is the thing that I will request you, to take this initiative and take in action if it's possible. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Vanessa Briscoe Hay. I live at 145 Victoria State Drive, Athens, Georgia, 30605. I really had no plans to get up here and speak to you this evening, but I've heard so many stories, and I've been touched. And I want to add my voice to the support for the anti-discrimination movement and the formation of a commission. Now, I'm a retired nurse, and I've lived in Athens since 1973. But I'm also a musician, and I've toured across America, and to Canada and to England. And I tell you, the eyes of the world sometimes run our little town here. And we attract business, we attract tourists, we attract university students from across the world to this town. And I think that I want them to feel comfortable here. I want them to feel that they aren't discriminated against. I have seen discrimination, but I don't want to see that in Athens. I want our town to be a shining place, a beautiful place, a place where people are not discriminated on for their age, for their sex, their sexual orientation, their religion, the color of their skin, any of that. I want to see what's best about America here in our town, in our community. And I got to see some of that Sunday night, because I sang with Athens in Harmony. And I hope that we get to see that again. And I hope that you vote and create a plan here, an ordinance, a commission, a committee, whatever it takes to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Hey, guys. I'm Kendall Notts, 167 Oxford Court.
Excuse me, would you give me your name again?
Yes, Kendall Notts.
Kendall Notts.
And Notts is spelled K-N-O-T-T-S. I'm not too involved with the committee or anything to do with the commission. I am involved with Real Food UGA, and I'm supporting that because of my involvement in the program, because I do believe in what this is trying to do here. But I have seen it in my own life, just with my dad. He took in an inner-city kid and threw a program in Roswell, Georgia. And the boy wasn't doing well. He was in high school, failing out, you know, fights, drugs, whatnot. But they stayed friends for years. And we, he even came over to our house, and he was, you know, a small part of our family, not as much for me, because I've been in school, but definitely for my dad and my mom. And, you know, he was about to flunk out of school once again, and my dad helped him get an internship, helped him get back into school. And next thing you know, he's at Georgia Military College, and they still keep up today. So it's just kind of an inspiring story, where you see, like, two different, two different people, two different colors coming together, and, you know, just working to help each other out and make a difference.
Thank you, Ms. Notts.
Adam Laszlo, 260 North Chase Street. We've had a lot of really forgiving people come to the microphone tonight. They get up here and they say, "Thank all of you so much for all the hard work you're doing." They're really, really nice people. So Tommy Valentine said some sort of half-apologetic nonsense about a difference between public input and public nuisance. Y'all, as a collective, have proved yourselves very much needing public nuisance in order to get anything useful done. So before addressing those people, I'd like to thank the four of you who have done a really good job on this. Melissa Link, my commissioner, for standing up steadfastly with this, and with the people who have been working so hard on this. Kelly Gertz, for even when it looked like this might fail, still working with us and trying to make it happen. And Jerry Neesmith and Jared Bailey for also stepping up here. As for the rest of y'all, Commissioner Harrod, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner Hamby, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Sims, and Commissioner Dickerson. I'm really excited to see y'all vote yes on this tonight, because it will prove that the power of the people is stronger than your obstruction. And I look very much forward to working sure you all lose your reelection bids.
Please, please, no demonstrations. You all have been very courteous tonight, and let's please continue that. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we're going to come behind the rail. And again, I do want to thank you all for your courtesy. It's very much appreciated by me and I'm sure your fellow citizens. So we're going to come behind the rail now, and we've had two items taken off the consent agenda, which we haven't voted on yet. And who took those off? Mr. Neesmith, if you want to address those, and we may go back and just vote on it as a bottom.
Yes, I'm certain we can put them back. So item one was the ordinance to amend the alcoholic beverage ordinance, which I have no problem with, but it gives me the opportunity to point out a problem that we do have with our licenses. And that is, many of the small restaurants really can't afford these licenses. They don't have the volume of drinking going on that a bar downtown has or a large restaurant. Right now, for example, a Class D retail liquor by the drink is $4,000 a year. Beer by the drink is $1,000, and wine is $1,000. That's $6,000. It's very difficult. They will not make that much profit off of drinking. So this comes right off of their bottom line. So I would like for us, in the next budget cycle, to reconsider our retail liquor by the drink, wine, and beer, and see if we can come up with some sort of tiered system that's based upon the amount of consumption at a retail establishment, as opposed to a flat fee for those. And that's, that's all I had to say.
Okay. And was item nine, was that yours?
That was item one. And item, I think Ms. Lake has something to say.
I just want to echo Commissioner Neesmith's concerns about the alcohol licensing fees. I've heard lots and lots of concerns from small business owners, and, you know, it really is unfair to consider a large-scale business that does lots and lots and lots of business selling alcohol compared to a really small restaurant or pub, and know that they're paying the same amount. And I know that some, some of our smaller businesses are getting rid of their- And I know that some, some of our smaller businesses are getting rid of their wine license. I mean, I can no longer get a glass of wine at my favorite bar, so they're losing a certain clientele, and, and it's, it's, we're also losing the diversity of, of the folks who would patronize those businesses by, by removing some of those licenses. So we really need to take an intense look at how we do our alcohol licensing and make sure that all business owners can meet the diversity of the citizens who might want to patronize them.
Okay. Are y'all happy for that stay on the consent, or do you want to pull it, keep it separate? Okay, what, item number nine, somebody ask?
Yes, ma'am, that was, that was I, again. This is the sidewalk improvement program. While I support this, this legislation from the LRC, I, I want to point out that our suburban roads, our suburban main thoroughfares, Atlanta Highway, Lexington Road, and others, really don't have any pedestrian access. Even though Georgia DOT has provided pedestrian, pedestrian lights and crosswalks, we have no sidewalks, and we have no pedestrian crossings across those thoroughfares. And one reason we don't see more accidents there is because people are smart enough not to try to cross them, even though they're at a bus stop and they gotta get across the street. Well, they don't have any choice. They've gotta get across the street to go to the business or to the job that's across four lanes or even six lanes of traffic. So I know these are GDOT roads predominantly, so I want to ask the Transportation and Public Works Director to really give some focus on getting GDOT to help us with our pedestrian safety on their roads. That's really all I had to say.
Are you okay for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Consent?
Back on consent.
Okay, so our, our consent agenda, our items?
Madam Mayor, just since Commissioner Neesmith brought it up in the context of this agenda item, I, I'd already intended to ask Madam Judge Williams to talk a little bit about our interaction with GDOT, given our other agenda item around bike and pedestrian safety, but I think this is a perfect opportunity. Steve Decker, our chief traffic engineer, and until recently interim director of Transportation Public Works, has spoken quite a bit about our desire to engage with GDOT to access some of the funds that they have available for exactly this kind of purpose on GDOT rights of way. So Madam Judge Williams, could you talk a little bit about what that process and timeline looks like?
Sure, and as y'all, as the commissioner, mayor and commissioner are aware, that there were a series of corridors that were looked at by our staff as part of an internal roadway safety audit. GDOT does one roadway safety audit approximately every quarter. We have asked for additional ones, we've had a vacant district engineer that's been filled now, they're coming over and to meet with our staff, and we're gonna talk about the various corridors and get their input. And Commissioner Gertz, I think you also are interested in any monies that GDOT may have to help implement some of these roadway safety audits. And the way that staff has explained to me the way the GDOT funding is, is it's not a pool of it like our LMeg that we would get just to spend where we want, it's, it's more project-specific. So when we get, when we have the GDOT folks here, and we talk about our various priorities, your priorities, and what the data reflects, then we will get, try to jointly work on a project with them. They may not provide all the funding, they may provide some of the funding. So discussions are going on, and we'll keep you all up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Y'all ready to vote on consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Move. Ordinance.
Oh, yes, we do. Number three, I think, ask.
There are three. The first is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to alcoholic beverages and for other purposes. Second, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions on Quailwood Drive and Hunter's Point Drive, and for other purposes. The third is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with, excuse me, with respect to speed zones and speed detection device permits, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
May I move for adoption of this consent agenda?
Simmons, who's, have a second? Mr. Gertz is second, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now move on to item number 10, which is the Government Operations Committee report on the revision to the alcohol licensing ordinance to, for prohibition against discrimination. Who'd like to open that discussion? Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't want to belabor any of this, there's obviously been a lot of conversation, both behind the rail and certainly throughout the community, but I do want to acknowledge the good work done by myriad citizens for this community over the last year. And some of that work has been to inform us and to make us more knowledgeable and more aware, and sometimes aware of painful things that we wish we didn't have to be aware of. But when you become aware, you can't fail to act. And I want to thank my colleagues as well, both on the staff level and on the elected side, because our process really is evolutionary. We are, we are always gestating ideas, contributing to them, improving them, taking new angles, and, and my colleagues have been part of that work, and I appreciate that up, up to this last week, and, and that's wonderful to know. And I'm very excited to have what was clear majority interest in moving forward with examination of a civil rights commission, because I think people realize that if we want to see the blossom on the vine, we have to nurture the root as well. And so I, again, would like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt the commission-defined option as presented by Commissioners Dickerson, Harrod, Sims, and Wright, and include the amendment provided by Commissioner Link that simply makes explicit what is implicit in our process, that we accept public input on these items.
I'll second.
Have a motion as a second.
I'd like to make a, a motion or a request of friendly amendment. I wasn't able to get my, my CDO to you in time, because I missed, I missed the email from Kelly, which wasn't his fault. But I would like to add that, an, an item that says, "Consideration for the option of forming a human rights advisory commission similar to other Athens-Clark County boards and advisory commissions composed of citizens appointed by the mayor and commission and other relevant organizations." The idea being that, that's, that's, that's what I'd like to offer as a, as a friendly amendment. The, the idea being that this, this, this human rights thing, whether it's a commission or a committee, needs to be enduring. It needs to be something that is nurtured by the, the government, and not something that is separate from the government, or is liable to be ignored, or simply go away, or both. I told some of you, and I'll just say it one more time, and I'm reminded of it tonight, I was raised in Jim Crow South, in North Alabama. And I remember the civil rights movement, I was a boy. We saw no problem, us white folk, with separate drinking fountains, movie theater entrances, restrooms, et cetera. We saw no problem with that, it was separate but equal. It was a civil rights movement, it was Dr. Martin Luther King, who pointed out to us that it wasn't equal, and it certainly was separate. And I remember having to make the decision myself, I think I might have been 10, 11 years old, which side of this issue I was on. And it was because of that dialogue, it was because of that discussion, it was because of that advocacy. So kind of different from what, what Commissioner Sims said the other day, and supportive of it. He said that the change has to come from the heart, and that dialogue, that discussion, that movement changed my heart. And what I'm hearing tonight is, we're not done yet, and this dialogue has to continue, not only so that we have laws and policies, because, but because people can hear the discussion, and their hearts can change. So that's why I'm hoping that we can consider as a part of this, a commission that's a part of this government and made up of, of representatives from the community, including NAACP, LGBTQ community, the Board of Education, the Hispanic community, perhaps the Council on Aging, because there is agism, I can tell you about it, the Jewish and Muslim communities, and perhaps the University of Georgia, for example. So that's my, that's what I'd like for Mr. Gertz to con, to consider as a friendly amendment.
Mr. Gertz.
Madam Mayor, I mean, certainly I think that the intent is strong. You know, anybody who's out there on Google will find among the first 50 hits, 49 of them are, are commissions within the framework of the government, because it's such important work, that the work must be done hand in glove between the citizenry and the elected and appointed officials, and, and with the exception of Orange County, California, the other OC, home of the West Coast Mickey Mouse, if you need directions, all of those others that, again, are in the first several pages of hits, are, are government embedded. And I, I do read, kind of in item number two, under the language provided, "We will explore ways to create a more inclusive and welcoming community through the creation of a government-appointed and operated citizen human relations committee." And, and I could add the, the two words, "or commission." I, you know, I certainly want to leave sort of a wide opportunity for staff to bring to us the best version for Athens, and so if I added the words "or commission," would that include?
That's quite acceptable.
Commissioner Gertz, thank you very much for, for that.
Mr. Harrod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say several things, one of which is, I was interested in Mr. McConnell bringing Bill Ship's book down. I actually have read that, and his account of the murder of Ms. Le Pen. And what's interesting, I'm sure Mr. Sims will remember this, of where the Klan used to meet. The Klan used to meet in the building that is now where the grit is. So some things do change. I also do want to state, we've had a lot of very powerful, very moving commentary of people coming down to talk to us tonight. I think there are a lot of interesting and exciting ideas. I think that the stories have been told with passion and conviction, but I think the most important comment, or one of the most important comments, is actually the, the comment from Mr. Maddox, who has been here 70 years, and hopefully he'll be here many more, where he talked about creating something where we don't just copy what other communities do, we need to create something that works for Athens. And I don't, despite what Mr. LaSilla said, I don't think that there is anybody behind this rail that does not want to create a more inclusive and welcoming community, and who does not think that the issue of civil rights and discrimination is something that needs to be ignored. The question is, and has always been, what is the best way to create something that works for Athens? That is not just window dressing, but actually works and actually does something. And I think that the motion that, or the, the commissioner-defined option opens, is, leaves the door open to creating something that works for Athens. It doesn't simply copy what other communities do, it's something that works for Athens. I think the other thing that the commissioner-defined option does is it directs the manager's office to do something right now. Creating some kind of framework is a longer-term process, and it will involve much more discussion amongst the elected officials, who really haven't had an opportunity much to talk about this collectively. It will involve much more discussion with the community as a whole. That's going to be a longer-term process. The third part of the motion, though, directs the manager's office, not necessarily the manager personally, but the office, the manager's office, to do something right now, to collect a, compile a list of community support services that people can go to right now. They may not know that they are there, and what this ordinance, or this option does, is that it creates basically a one-stop shopping place where resources, local, state, and federal, can be, people can be made aware of them. So I actually think that this ordinance does, or this proposal, provides a mechanism for us to create something that will work for Athens, given our particularities, and in a way that simply copying what Mayor may not be doing, now the communities would not. So given that this is a commission-defined option that was put together by four of us, I would like to have the opportunity to vote on the commission-defined option as it was put forward. So I want to make a substitute motion, which is to adopt the commission-defined option put together by Commissioners Dickerson, Harrod, Sims, and Wright, parts one, two, and three. The first part, which, again, will do something immediately, which is to pass the amendments that were worked on by our attorney's office to address the issue of alcohol licensing downtown, and not just downtown, but obviously most of the bars are downtown. It does direct the officer, the manager, and the attorney to explore a number of different options. It is important that we work within the law. A lot of the ideas from other states are great, and I'm hoping that we can do some of those here in Athens, but the constitutions in those states operate in different ways. And so we are hamstrung to a certain degree in some of the things, not in all of the things, we're not completely hamstrung in everything, but there are certain things that relate to some of the things that were talked about this evening, that we legally simply cannot do in the state of Georgia. But there are other things that we can do. So that, that is, that is the motion that I am making.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor in a second. And, and before we vote, this substitute motion has three parts to it.
Correct.
And I think it was very clear tonight that this third part is very desperately needed in our community, because there are so many things, many things that were, that were asked for at the podium tonight already exist in our community. So I think that this third part of your motion is going to be very, very educational for the whole community. And I would urge people here that, that care to listen to the remarks Mr. Maddox made about, the Athens Human Relations Committee has six active members now, those six members are doing amazing things, and many people, one of the suggestions tonight was a scholarship, or an essay contest, and that committee is giving away thousands of dollars in scholarships every year to children of every race, based on scholarship, on essays that they write relating to achieving Dr. King's dream. I've, I've read many of those scholarship applications myself. And so I, I think that's going to be an extremely beneficial thing that, again, will be pretty immediate. So thank you, everybody that came here tonight, and, and please look around and see what you can do with the already existing mechanisms that exist in our community.
Madam Mayor, I have a point of order.
And I'm gonna.
I have a point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think Commissioner Gertz agreed to my friendly amendment, but I didn't hear the second term being asked if they agreed to it.
Well, we have, we have a substitute motion on the floor now.
I understand that, but if we go back to the previous motion, I would like for it to be clear.
Okay, we'll go back to the second, the previous motion, to see if there's a second to accepting the amendment to Mr. Gertz's motion.
I, I would second it.
Okay. So there's a motion, a second there. Now we will go, go back to the, to the substitute motion.
So let me get this straight, perhaps I misunderstood. I, I believe Commissioner Gertz actually made the motion that was the commission-defined option from Commissioners Dickerson, Harrod, Sims, and Wright. Is that not correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
And he added to it the commission-defined option from Commissioner Link. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And then there was my somewhat small suggestion for an amendment to it. And now Commissioner Harrod wants us just to vote on the Dickerson, Harrod, Sims, and Wright motion without, or option without any changes.
Right.
I, I don't quite understand that, and I can tell you that I think that the commission-defined option offered by Commissioner Link, Commissioner Link just makes sense. So now I have to struggle between two very similar motions, and that's troubling to me. I, I, I really wish there was a little more spirited collaboration here.
Thank you. Ms. Link.
Perhaps Commissioner Harrod could make it clear as to why he would like to exclude the friendly amendment that would include public input. Maybe that, that explanation could be made, and we could have a clearer idea of what's going on here.
I would be happy to. The, I think what the ordinance does here is it directs our manager and our attorney to work on this, and we typically do not direct them to meet with members of the public when they are working on things like this. It's a matter of process.
Ms., Ms. Ryan.
Yeah, I, I wanted to chime in. It appears I'm getting picked on because I have to wait and process all the public input up into our voting period, and I didn't stand with people when they thought I should be standing with them, and I apologize if that hurt your feelings, I certainly didn't do that. And I apologize if that hurt your feelings, I certainly didn't do that to hurt your feelings. I have, the way I process information, I've been researching this topic as it's been going on since January, when we passionately, passionately passed the resolution so that people would know our town does not accept the behavior that we were hearing about. And we continue to not accept that behavior, and we all want to make things better. It's how we get there. And every time we go somewhere, and every time we do something behind the rail, it has a process that includes public input, just like tonight. Every work session, every email we get, every phone call, everything we do, not everybody works at the podium, under the camera, not everybody comes out here for their public input. We have different processes for different ways that people communicate. That said, I don't know if that helps with the part about how this, not adding a new process for this topic, but keeping our process of making decisions and public input fair that, as we always do for every topic. In researching and looking at what we had, I also came up with the Athens Area Human Relations Council that was started by the great Reverend Nunley Senior, that I worked with for eight years on the school board, a great man. It was started in 1979. We have the Better Business Bureau, we have the Governor's Office of Community Affairs. The newest, very powerful group that is working in our community, the Athens Antidiscrimination Movement, it seems to be very effective as well. And there are things, and then there's also religious-based support that the government cannot be a part of because of separation in church and state. So there's a variety of groups that can help and take your energy and address things and help their established groups be effective in the current times that you're experiencing. And we're not trying to stifle that, and we're trying to model what we can do to come forward and have more that can be involved and, I guess, broadcast or promote the resources that are available and that what we can do. So I just need to get that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anyone else want to say? Mr. Hamby.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's been an interesting evening, interesting discussion, I think it's been a helpful discussion. It seems, though, that the answer to the committee will be answered at the end of our friskal year, but as I was listening to the folks come up tonight at our previous meeting, I did have some thoughts running through my, through my small little brain, but nonetheless, thanks a little bit. But some of the thoughts and some of the things that I was thinking about is maybe we could ask ourselves some questions, some as individuals, some as the board that we serve on, or any type of committee that we served on. And certainly, certainly, for example, you know, I wonder about myself, and Moka hit on this, I actually had it written down, Moka, before I came to the meeting, and you said the exact same thought. I was thinking, what am I doing in my life to get to know other people who are different from me? Because I've seen it in some events downtown, we try to promote the events downtown, but not only downtown, elsewhere, that it provides opportunities for people to get to know one another that are different. And when you have those opportunities, you understand better. And I probably need, and I think we all should strive to do a better job at that. The other thing I wonder about as a commission is should we be more vocal with our state legislatures? You know, we went through this redistricting process, and certainly it didn't turn out the way we wanted it to. Our minority representation on this board has been diminished. I don't think that's a good thing. It's not good for Athens, it's not good for anybody. You know, the important part of governing is having people who are different at the seat, at the table, behind the rail. And I think, I think we need to sort of, we fought the good fight then, but maybe we need to bring that back up as we meet with our legislators coming up here. So let me refer to my notes real quick, because I had some, had some good thoughts and I want to make sure I get them all out. So, believe it or not. Going back to the meeting new people, you know, I hang around here a lot, and that's probably why I want to meet new people, is to, it's getting a little boring. But the other thing that we can do besides meeting our legislators is how do we do a better job promoting our vacancies and recruiting people for our board and authorities? What are there, 20, 30, Allison?
Over 30.
I'm sorry?
Over 30.
Over 30 boards. That's a lot of seats at the table that, you know, and I try to think back over the time when we've done those interviews, how many of those people that we've interviewed, you know, we'll be down there all day. How many are African-American? Not many. You know, not many. Commissioner Sims, I mean, somebody can help me, you've been here the longest, how many African-Americans have served on our planning commission? Two that I can think of. Herb Gilmore and Ty Barnett, I believe. Yeah? So that, I think that says something. It says something that we need to do a better job of giving, not giving, but making sure opportunities are available for people who don't look like us at the table, where decisions are made. So if people are at the table that don't look like us, you get a different viewpoint and you get different actions. And I think that's important, I think we're missing that. Other thing, how do we communicate with nonprofits? You know, we give, we give money to nonprofits through CDBG, we never, you know, what about their boards? You know, how do their boards reflect what we're trying to do, or reflect Athens? They do a lot of work, that was mentioned here tonight, and I just sometimes wonder about their boards. They may be, I don't know, but that's a question we need to ask. I'm gonna get some water. Excuse me. Gee, it doesn't turn the air conditioner on in this building, and it's... So not only nonprofits, but advocacy groups, you know, we get a lot of people coming to us and wanting to, wanting to comment on things, and that's good, and bring our attention to things. But we have to ask ourselves, and they have to ask themselves, that's the other thing, too. You know, if you're a board member of 13 and you only have one African-American, is that really representing everyone in Athens? And that's a good question to ask. The, I've got two more, and I'll hush. And when we, as individual commissioners, have an opportunity to recommend a committee to the mayor, how should we approach that to make sure different voices in our own individual district are represented at the table? You know, I'm sitting here, listening to everybody, and then I look at this T-Sloth Citizens Advisory Board that the mayor is going to announce here soon. And there's, let me see, where am I here? T-Sloth, for those that you may not be aware, is a project or initiative that will start here soon. They've given $100 million over five years, will have an impact for the next 20 years on Athens. Whoever is on this committee will help shape its future. I noticed some things that stand out in my mind. You know, certainly Commissioner Link, and it may be an oversight on your part, and I hope it is. Your district is 36% African-American, that's 4,000 people. And you're the second highest African-American district behind Commissioner Sims. And it looks like you are recommending two white people from near the same area.
Who are very, very strong advocates for minorities throughout this community.
I don't doubt that.
That's their life's work.
But are there not also strong African-American candidates in your district who could also represent the needs of their neighborhood and the needs of their community?
Let's keep it on, to you, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You all, please direct your comments to the mayor and not each other.
And that's the point I'm trying to make, Madam Mayor, is that if you, if you want our community to be diverse, and if you want people to have a voice, you said this many times, Melissa, and that's why I'm suggesting, that's why I'm suggesting, Madam Mayor, that this may be an oversight on Commissioner Link's part. And if so, that's, that's fine. I would take the opportunity to talk to you and to see if I can make some changes to that, because I think some changes are warranted there. I want, from here on, I want us to look at these committees that we're putting together, these boards and authorities, and make sure that they reflect how Athens looks. And that's important. If we're ever going to change, we can put together a committee all we want to, but unless we're doing stuff as individuals, as individual commissioners, it's not going to make a difference. And that's the point I'm trying to make. So at the end of the day, you know, are the actions we're taking, do they mean as much as the words we're saying? And that's, you know, you have to ask yourself that.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. And if, we have, we have the committee forms, which I will announce at the end of the meeting, but if any commissioner feels that they need to make a change, it would be entertained. So. Did you have your hand up, Ms. Bell?
I did.
Yes, ma'am.
At the meeting, we did not have your presence here. At the end of that meeting, there had been a lot of unhappiness that we had not brought this subject forward. And I spoke to the audience and to the, behind the rail, that there was a reason why we did not deal with it, but there would be a time when we would deal with it, and it would be for the right reasons, and it would be for everybody in this room, and that's what we've done tonight. The second part of it, I wanted to say, when we have downtown events, I've wanted for a long time to be more all-inclusive. We used to have the First Night Athens, and that was before we even dealt with this subject. But the one thing we did for July 4th with the fireworks, we had an all-inclusive group of people. When we, I came into the downtown over on Washington Street, I had tears in my eyes when I rounded the corners and saw the families that were in downtown Athens together, and it was a wonderful mixture. And that's the simple way of us, I think, beginning to make some changes in what we're willing to accept, and what we have in Athens-Clark County, and what we can do all together. But we've got to work at it piece by piece, little by little, and this is a beginning step to start, to move forward on that. And that, I was not a part of the defined option on either side. I was not asked to participate, but they knew where my heart was in this. I have no apologies for that, but I knew where my vote was going to go for the right reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Does anybody else? Ms. Dickerson.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I guess the first thing I want to mention is I don't, not really sure that Commissioner Neesmith's motion, friendly amendment, is necessarily lost in this, because we do say, if you look on line four of Number Two, or through some other mechanism, and I think that leaves the door open for whatever. So I don't know that that, that we have to spell out everything. I think that's the problem. One of our speakers got up tonight and said, we all have blind spots. I think that's true of everybody in this room, either those who are fighting for a committee, those who are fighting for some other mechanism or whatever. I mean, we all have our blind spots. And I guess the thing I want to, I guess what I want to say is we all want the same thing. We all basically want to find the best possible solution to the issues that are facing our community, whether it be discrimination, whether it be housing issues, whether it be economic development. Those are the kind of things that we want to do. And I echo what Charlie Maddox said, is that, you know, I was born and raised here, and I know y'all get tired of hearing that, but I was born and raised here. It is a very diverse community. The university makes it so, bringing people from all over the world. And I think that, you know, it's hard when you bring that many people together that have all those different backgrounds to get along. I mean, it's hard for my three boys to get along, and they all look the same and, you know, are pretty much the same age and all that. But, but I think, I've never known Athens in all the years I've lived here to do what everybody else is doing. We are a very unique community, and that's what makes us so great. That's why when you leave here, you want to come back. That's why people make Athens their home. We're very unique. We listen. I double-dog dare anybody to walk outside these county lines and tell me that we're not diverse. We are very diverse. And I think, for that matter, we handle it fairly well in the grand scheme of things, given how much diversity we do have and the challenges that we face as a result. One thing I do want to mention, and I believe it was Mr. Johnson who mentioned, he had heard some rumblings about some efforts that are going on to try to address this on a larger scale, and I might actually ask Mr., our manager, to explain this a little bit better, because he's a little bit, he's better at explaining this, but I'll tell the general framework for this. And right now, myself, Commissioner Hamby, and my co-chair, Bob Gooch, are working on what, right now, we're calling a Community and Economic Development Strategy Initiative. We're on the verge of launching that. And right now, we are actually meeting tomorrow to try to make a decision about how to fill out that committee. And in doing so, we made it, we're doing something I don't think anybody in the government or any private institution or organization's ever done. We looked at the makeup of our community. And we determined how many females, how many blacks, how many Asians, how many males, how many white, you know, we determined what we need on that committee, you know, to make it a diverse and bring the different perspectives. We looked at geography, because that's an issue Commissioner Herr and I have an issue. You know, we represent, and even, even some of the other, and I didn't say Commissioner Neesmith and Commissioner Sims, is often we have a lot of groups, I mean, this whole issue tonight is about downtown Athens. Come to the east side, we're very diverse. We'll, we'll accept you any day of the week. And so, but I would say, I would say that, I would say that we have, we are doing something nobody else has done. We're trying to focus on, trying to bring people to the table that have diverse perspectives, both in, you know, we're talking faith, any type of background issues. And we're, and it's real, I'm really excited about it. I think it's something that this will play into some, this discussion will, because it's a community issue. It will fold into our discussions, and we will have public meetings. And I hope everybody in this room that has a voice will come to those meetings and, and share their, their perspective on that. Commissioner, I mean, Manager Williams, if you have anything to add to that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, and so Commissioner Dickerson's right. And I think Commissioner Hamby makes a point that we should have diverse committees, and I know that the Audit Committee even talked about that at their last meeting, about how to make our boards and commissions more diverse. And I know there's been ongoing discussions in various groups about how to build capacity in different segments of the community, so that folks feel comfortable, that they feel like they have the context to participate and a voice be heard. And I echo what Commissioner Dickerson said. I think there are some folks making a very valiant effort with that long-term vision for the community, to be able to say to the citizens that this commission, this committee, this steering committee is very, is reflective of our community.
Thank you. Thank both of you for that, because there are a lot of things going on in this community where we're doing a lot of self-examination, and I think it's going to bear some good fruit for us, but things take time in government. Has anybody, Ms. Wright, have you spoken, you haven't spoken yet?
No. The other thing I wanted to add in reference to the amendment that's dealing with alcohol, the alcohol license amendment and the approaches that we're making for the private party declaration or notification, as well as posting the dress code, a lot of that's getting lost as a very important part of this. And I just wanted to say, for the people who are, the part about including restaurants, Michael's Law was, came into effect July 1 at the state level, and that also is just for bars. So it's not just unique to us having this ordinance address that. There's reasons for that, because it is tied to the alcohol license part of it. So I just wanted to add that in there as an example, that Michael's Law also is only for bars.
Mr. Neesmith.
Well, I just want to point out that there are many times where staff is working on ordinances, where we have citizens' participation in review and, and discussion about those, not just ordinances that we have before us at that time. So I would, I would respectfully disagree with Commissioner Herrit about that. I see no harm, I see only good, and including Commissioner Link's words in the, in the commission-defined option.
Please.
Simply, we're not telling the manager, and manager how to enable citizens, we're saying to enable, to, how to enable citizen input, but we're just saying, do it. And there are many ways to do it that are very, very manageable, and I'm quite certain would be very, very productive. You know, and for that reason, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to support Commissioner Herrit's substitute motion, and I really hate that, because if it passes, that means I voted against this ordinance. And I hope we will understand this difficult position that we've been put in here, and understand that I'm not voting against it, I'm not voting, I'm just not voting for this particular version, that excludes, that excludes community input to the process.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, we had a healthy retreat, at which we talked about process, and we talked about questions of collaboration, and this body needs to be as collaborative as possible. And I'm thinking back to the 1970s, when there was that famous commercial about not getting your chocolate in my peanut butter. And I think we have an opportunity today, not only in terms of the substance of what we have before us, but in terms of process, to be thoughtful and inclusive. And I would request that of us every day.
Thank you. Mr.?
And I think we have, I think we have in the past, I mean, we'd heard from 43 people here tonight. We are a government that does welcome public input and takes public input. We need to be better at being inclusive, though. I'll say that for sure. And, and so, but any rate, I think we ought to move ahead with the motion that's on the table and let staff work out the details. They could work out these details, they may come back to us and say, let's have a work session on this, or let's, let's, I mean, we don't, we don't always say for any transportation project, or, and oftentimes, they do it anyway, and they just let us know they're going to do it. But I think, I think we ought to just let staff start the process and see where it goes. I mean, we're going to... I mean, we're going to have public input. There's, we, we just don't function as a government without public input.
Ms. Neesmith.
And there is absolutely no harm or negative effect of including Melissa Link's explicit requirement to have public input. So let's include it. Let's not decide not to include it. That's the wrong message to the public.
Okay, okay, guys, one of the things, I'm going to say something right quick, is that what we do tonight is not the end of this discussion, it's the beginning. And whatever our staff comes back to us with, will, will then either be handled through a work session or directed to a committee. So the staff is not going to solve this problem for us, they're going to bring, they're, they're going to bring options to us to look at, and then it will be up to these 11 people behind this rail to sort through those options, plus any others that we bring on our own. But this is just the beginning of the process, this is not the end of the process. And I, I think we've, Mr. Bailey, we hadn't heard from you yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's kind of disappointing that, that we're loggerheads over this. The two CDOs, well, three CDOs, with a combination thereof are very similar, and it's a shame that, that we've got people basically engaged in a pissing contest. The first two CDOs were put out a long time in advance, and there was plenty of opportunity for everybody to come and talk about it and iron it out. And then we'll get another CDO on Friday that is very similar, and it's not a bad one. But it seems to me that we could have been a little more collaborative and ironed out whatever differences and presented a unified CDO, and I'm somewhat disappointed. And I would like to see us have the CDO that was suggested with the inclusions of a few more bits of language to the one that was authored by Commissioner Herritt and his group.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? We have, we have a substitute motion on the floor and a second. Mr. Bearman, please. Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to prohibition of discrimination by alcohol licensees and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, Ms. Bratton, please.
Herritt?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Gertz?
I'll abstain from this vote.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Point of, point of problem, you have to proceed, procedure does there not need to be a reason for an abstention, Mr. Bearman?
I don't think so.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bratton.
Link?
I'll abstain as well.
Wright?
I'm a yes.
Bailey?
I'm a no.
Neesmith?
No.
Handy?
Yes.
Vale?
Yes.
Six yes, and two abstentions and two no.
The yes votes come from the enemies of justice.
Our substitute motion has passed. We'll move on to item number 11, which is pedestrian bicycle improvements, and we've got a CDO on that. Who would like to start that discuss, maybe two CDOs, I believe. Who wants to start the discussion? Mr. Herritt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two CDOs here, one that Commissioner Dickerson and I put together, much of which basically mirrors what Commissioner Gertz had put together. There's one-
The yes votes are the enemies of justice!
I'm sorry, if, if anyone disturbs our meeting to that extent, we'll have to ask our police officers to escort them out, because we're trying to have a government meeting.
The yes votes are the enemies of justice!
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I think you're going to have to consider the recommendations that have made, been made for this Tea Splice Committee, based on what we just witnessed. And they are just recommendations.
Yes. Please, Mr. Herritt, go ahead.
So there are two commissioner-defined options. Commissioner Gertz talked about a number of improvements, which I don't have a problem with. He talked about those at the agenda-setting meeting. So basically, the first three points in the commissioner-defined option that Commissioner Dickerson and I put together, basically, are exactly the same as what Commissioner Gertz had put forward, with one slight variation based upon the discussion from the manager's office, or our discussion at the end of the, at our last meeting, which was to add an "or" for the shrubbery, because there was some discussion about trees, trees, in some places, they may be appropriate, excuse me, not shrubbery, for trees. So in some places, they may be appropriate, in some places, they may not. So with the exception of that, the first three are basically what Commissioner Gertz put together. The fourth one, Commissioner Dickerson and I were discussing, based upon the conversation that we had at the, the last, at our agenda-setting meeting, and we did put a fourth recommendation for some pedestrian and traffic improvements, which we are having some significant issues out on the east side, outside the Loop. That is just as important as other parts of the community, and we are having some issues particularly on Cedar Shoals Drive, which, for those of you who have been on the commission for a little while, will remember, it used to be a four-lane road. We did a road diet, it is now a three-lane road, but that changed the number of lanes, but it did not obviously change the width of the street. And so it is still dangerous to cross, and so what we had suggested is to put, allow staff to figure out the best locations for these, but basically to add, to Commissioner Gertz's recommendations, two RRFBs to be located somewhere along Cedar Shoals Drive, where it makes most sense. Those would also be with Refuge Islands. One of the other issues that we're having out on Cedar Shoals Drive is when the bus stops, drivers are overtaking the bus, and that is dangerous for, for people trying to cross the street, and so this hopefully will address that issue. When I talked to Manager Williams, again, in the interest of transparency, when I talked to him, before I sent this to the Clark Commission, he had indicated a preliminary estimate for the cost of that would be about $34,000. I believe, Manager Williams, it's a little bit higher than that, but not too much.
That's correct. When staff took another look at it, we're still recommending the components. Commissioner Herritt and Dickerson contacted us and said, "If we wanted to do this, what should it look like?" And we took an initial look, and we came back with, you know, without a design. This was our first response. After staff went back out again, we feel like crosswalk markings and thermoplastic paint would also be, would help, help the, the pedestrian safety there, and that adds another $15,000 to the 34. So I would just say $50,000 for the project, for, for two separate crosswalks, RRFBs, and Refuge Islands on Cedar Shoals Drive.
And just for clarification, so we do have a traffic light in front of the high school, and so this would be located, again, at staff's, you know, they're the experts on locating. I'm certainly not an expert on doing that, but it would, I'm imagining it would be somewhere between the high school and the intersection with Davis Road. So I would like to move that as a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to put this out there, and I'm not sure that it interferes with the way that this is coming forward, that the Prince Avenue at Newton Street crosswalk, that I would like for us to be supportive of it, getting the $9,000 RRFBs, which is going to free up $21,000 for this other part, so that we've got some consistency in the same type of crosswalk and the same type of blinking thing, as, as opposed to having one that is significantly more expensive. If it's coming in at the end of the study that's happening on Prince Avenue, it could be, very well be that they come up with another reason for that. So I don't know if that has to be addressed, but I hope that when we get to that, we can address it.
If I, Madam Mayor, if I could just-
Yes, Mr. Herritt, please.
Commissioner Gertz wants to talk about parts one, two, and three, because they're basically his.
Oh, okay.
I think that will come under that.
Okay. Anybody before Mr. Gertz? Okay, Mr. Gertz.
I am supportive of removing the overhead component of the Prince Newton signal and retaining only the RRFB, if, if you'd accept that friendly amendment.
Sure.
I will make brief mention that essentially what I've asked for in, in the earlier component is planted components of our crossings in two locations on Prince Avenue, and that would be at Pope Street and at Piedmont College, on North Avenue, between Fifth Street and Berlin, and on Baxter Street at the 1082 location, I believe, is, is the address. And so these would very much be like some of the planted areas that the community knows well. For example, the one very near the, the public library on Baxter Street. The rationale being, as long as we're getting work crew out there, as long as we're breaking up the concrete, as long as we're making modifications, we should make the most positive modification possible.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question for the manager. I should probably know this, but Cedar Shoals High School, this is not something that we could use Safe Routes to School funds for, they only for elementary schools, or has that money all been expended?
No, I believe there's, there's some still accounted for. As you know, we've got the big project at H.D. Edwards right now. I'd have to go back and look at the balances, and we would have to look at where these might be located. Some initial thoughts were Cedar Shoals Road at East Paces Drive at the bus stop, and Cedar Shoals Road at Barrington Drive at the bus stop. I think there's some threshold in the past that we've used to sort of, I don't know if it's a distance-
A mile.
It's a mile? Okay, so it could be that, that, that we could use those funds for those purposes. We'd have to take a look at it.
Thank you.
So this CDO calls for that $34,000 to come from the general, from the operating contingency.
$50,000.
$50,000. So if there's money available from Safe Routes to School, and we pass this motion, how do we, how do we get that money back in here?
Well, I think you could amend the language to say eligible sources of funding.
That would be fine, if you want to, if that makes the manager's job easier, to just simply say eligible sources of funding, that, I'm fine with that. Getting the infrastructure built is more important than-
I just wanted to point out that the road we're looking at, Cedar Shoals, is actually the, the mileage is actually longer than any of the streets that are listed on the, the pedestrian bicycle, and, and that's an issue, because we have a lot of people that feed into that, into that road and have no way to access safely. I mean, you know, they run across it. I ride that road quite often, I've seen Commissioner Herritt does, too, and, and at night, it's really bad. So, so I'm really excited, and I appreciate the support for this as well, even though it's not my district.
But a lot of your people drive that street.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote? Can y'all understand what we're, Mr. Bailey?
I just wanted to say that, that the spirit of cooperation on this particular, these two CDOs is much better, and I wish it was always like this. So I think you've come up with a very good alternative CDO, and the original one was very good, too. So I'm just glad to see this all get along.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anybody else want to say anything before we vote? Okay, we have a motion, second. Everybody understands what we're voting on? It's the, the CDO that was brought forward by Herritt and Dickerson.
Subtracting the $21,000 for the overhead component.
Right.
And changing the general fund operating contingency to funds as available.
So I don't see any need for a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Obviously, a roll call was not needed. Okay. We're now to item number 12, which is a revision to the sedimentation and pollution control ordinance. And Bill, you need to read the ordinance. I believe we've got two options to choose from.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control and for other purposes.
Okay. Discussion, yes, ma'am.
I have a question from constituent who is in this profession and wanted to know what the extra copy of this paperwork that needs to now be provided to our, I think it's state paperwork or EPA, how that extra copy being supplied to planning would be used.
Mr. Williams, would you help us with that, please?
Well, just, it, it helps our staff understand what's being applied for, and, and helps us to understand what the project is about.
As far as when we check it, we, and it's, so it's-
It just gives us early notice on something that we're ultimately going to be involved in.
Okay, all right. And then, so it just allows us to reinforce, as well as know that the paperwork has been done?
Yes.
Is it a combination of the two?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor? I actually have a question. On page 93 of the PDF, the Certified Professional in Erosion and Sediment, Sediment Control actually lists a company, and my only thought is that every time that company changes, we're going to have to go back and do an ordinance amendment. So my question is, why not, the language could be a little bit more generic, in that, you know, whoever the approved, I mean, assume this is a state agency that is, maybe some way to say that, so that we don't have to see this, that we don't have to ask staff to come back every time that changes. I don't know how often it changes, but it just occurred to me that that's something that perhaps would make their life a little bit easier, so, and ours, too.
Well, I had the same question as you did, and so, and I know this is not as intuitive as some of the other things that we do, but basically, we're being asked by the state to adopt a model ordinance, and that language that you're referring to comes from the state. And we have to adopt it as, as they put it in. Now, just for the benefit of the public, what staff has done, to what Commissioner Wright referred to, has added a couple of voluntary amendments, which we can add to, we can't take away from. And one was, and just early notice on certain projects, the local issuing authority, as well as just clarifying a term that's already in there now, stopper order.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve option one.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now we get to the point in our night that anyone that wishes to speak to us about anything not on the agenda can come to the podium and have your three minutes.
Tyler Dewey, 1075 West Broad Street, and I just wanted to say that we, we've worked on and off with, there's actually at Cedar Shoals High School, there's a self-made bicycling club. They call themselves the Cedar Speeders, and I think they'll be very excited to hear that Median Islands are coming into their school, and I'm going to tell them, probably not tonight, because it's a little late, but very shortly, and hopefully, they'll be on the road, and I think they'll be riding with us in the holiday parade this year again, which is awesome. So I'm just really excited to see that happen on Cedar Shoals and help that bike club out a little bit.
Thank you, Tyler. Anyone else wishes to address the mayor and commission?
Good evening once again. I didn't think I'd be back at the podium so quick, but, Broderick Flanagan, 1645 East Broad Street. I want to speak briefly to, to something that's been happening in our community for a while, gentrification. I understand that there's an infill housing ordinance that will be coming down the pipes at some point over the next few weeks or months ahead. I recently spoke at the planning commission about that, and, and they were having a discussion about, there are a few loopholes in that ordinance that protect certain neighborhoods, but then protect others. Like, for instance, I think the ordinance came about because of some construction that was about to happen in Five Points, and, you know, there was an organization by that community, and they worked with the planning commission and other citizens to form this ordinance. The black community has been, you know, trying to protect their neighborhoods for some time now, and I think we'll miss the opportunity to get some protection for those neighborhoods, because this ordinance will not protect multifamily zones, like in East Athens or East Broad Street and Hancock Corridor. I believe once this ordinance comes down the pipe, we need to seriously look at protecting those neighborhoods as well. I understand the need for growth and development in communities, but I believe that we can have growth and development without, you know, threatening certain members of our community because of class. And a lot of times, class and race, those, both things, they overlap a lot. So I urge you to really consider- So I urge you to really consider, you know, making sure that those type of protections are protected in those African-American neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Anyone else?
Tim Dunson, 290 Midway Road. So that was interesting. I just want to start by saying again, thank you to Commissioner Gertz, Commissioner Link, Commissioner Neesmith, Commissioner Bailey for showing your leadership to actually get this vote to even happen. The other six of you, maybe I'm wrong, from the way I read it in my communications with pretty much all of you, this vote wouldn't even happen if it wasn't for those four stepping up, leading, listening, 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 listening. I take a little offense, I have to say, at some of the, at the assumption that since we researched, I don't know, what was about 40 different cities, the assumption that we didn't first research Athens. We researched Athens. It's very familiar with the Athens Human Rights Council, and attempted to reach out to them multiple times in January. And I'm very appreciative of the scholarship work that they do. It is great, great work. But it is not the same work that we were talking about and our, and what the Athens Civil Rights Committee could be, and actually even the same work in what all of y'all CDOs said. If you believe so, then the CDOs probably wouldn't have said so. So we did reach out to them. We researched them, and we're glad they exist, and we would love to be more helpful and make them more fruitful, and I hope that goes vice versa. Also, the assumption that their existence, or other ones, isn't that we couldn't improve, do more. We should always be doing more. I think all of y'all agree, we should always be striving to do more. And a big part of this is that the Athens Civil Rights Committee, and I think this gets lost a little bit sometimes, is not to get, to just get rid of discrimination, to bring us to neutral level. It's not. The Athens Civil Rights Committee is to bring us far above that zero level. If we have discrimination, we're somewhere around negative 10 or something like that. We're not the most discriminatory community, of course, not in no way saying we are. I don't want to see us at zero. I want to see us at 100. And you know what to do that? We need y'all. We need y'all to step up. We need y'all to go over, further beyond. Create a civil rights committee. Don't bicker back here, like, don't bicker back here. It's a little embarrassing sometimes watching my commissioners act like that. And, because we can always do better, all of us do better. I can do better. Commissioner Hamby, I don't know if the 13 board members, one being a person of color, was a dig at Athens for everyone. Maybe it's not. Maybe it was. Because we do have one, only one board member of color right now, which is, which is disappointing. We need to have more. We need to be doing better. I need to be doing better. All of us do. And there's absolutely no way that public input's going to make that worse. It's definitely going to improve it. And I would like to remind us that there are, is no public input at work sessions. There is no public input at this committee meetings. So going that direction does not put in public input. Thank you for passing this. I'm disappointed in some of the conversation, how it happened, but I'm trying to be optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunson.
Mary Miller, 240 Tera Way. I'm here to speak about the issue of how citizens can communicate our wishes to the mayor and the commission. We were told that we didn't need Commissioner Link's amendment because public input was sought. A hell of a lot of public input was given tonight, and as best I can tell, the majority of the commissioners ignored what this public input asked for in their vote. I appreciate what you did pass. I don't think that it went far enough. I know that last month, many of us were here hoping that this issue would be discussed, and it wasn't. And Ms. Dunson, at that time, you called us out for being disruptive. Many of us felt that the absence of that issue from the ballot was the greater disruption. And when folks, folks are here, they're peacefully and respectfully making their wishes heard. And when y'all at least give the appearance of ignoring them, it's very discouraging to the people of good faith who are putting their heart and soul into trying to make this community better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark McConnell, 2510 Commerce Road, Athens, Georgia. Thank you all for the work that you do. Did y'all get one of these? Did you get one in your mailbox? I know some of you probably didn't check your mailbox, but I had one put in there. Last week, we had a showing of the movie Before the Flood. It's a Leonardo DiCaprio documentary on climate change. If you haven't seen it, I urge you to see it. You can stream it live. We are also going to try to bring it to Sine. Still in the works, maybe right before Thanksgiving, before the kids get out of school. It's empowering. It will make you wake up. Speaking of which, yesterday was Halloween. And I hope everybody had good treats and not so many tricks. And the scariest thing that happened yesterday wasn't to do with witches and warlocks, or ghosts and goblins, or even pirates. It was the temperature. It was 88 degrees yesterday. We set a new record for the warmest Halloween ever in Georgia's history. We hit 88 degrees. The old record was 84 back in 1961. So it's not getting any warmer. It hasn't rained in, well, let's see, September 1st, going back that far, we have had just a little over an inch of rain. We are six-plus inches in a deficit for precipitation right now. Our rivers are low, and we're on the edge of going into extreme drought. We, everywhere around us is in extreme drought. Good portions of the state are in what they call extensive drought conditions. No rain in sight, our rivers, that's where we get our drinking water. Everybody knows how important this is. I'm not here to figure out how to make it rain. I'm here to make you aware of what's going on so that we can take better actions in the future to be more conservative with our resources. Many of you know I'm an arborist, so I study trees. I know a few things about trees and soil. The current heat and drought are putting the entire ecosystem of our area under extreme stress. People, too, are under stress because of this heat and drought. When plants can't move water from the roots to the top, they shut down. After an extended period of this, they die. Without sufficient water, they will die. As the climate keeps warming, the situation gets worse. On May 6, 2014, I stood before you, talked about the National Climate Assessment, and I just want you to know that we are losing this battle very badly. At this rate, in 20 years, things might be very ugly. I feel sorry for the children of the future.
Mark, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Our country employs a very smart man. His name is Andrew Saunders. He's the environmental coordinator. Ask him what we can do. Thank you.
And Mark, for a Yankee, I thought you could talk a little faster than that.
James Moy, 394 Coney Street. And I have several words for you tonight, but I'm going to start with one word: plastics. They were the future back in the 60s, but in our present day, when we face the issues of reeling back our fossil fuel consumption and repairing the damage we've done to the environment, I think we can all agree that we need to make our want and use of plastics a thing of the past. Convenient disposable items like plastic bags haven't been around all that long, but we now use them as if there's no alternative to them, as if they weren't made from a precious, non-renewable, highly contentious resource, the demand for which is currently displacing native people of this continent as we speak, as if they weren't persisted in our rivers for decades, and as if each one of them doesn't threaten to choke, suffocate, and starve wildlife. Plastic bags may cost a fraction of a cent to the businesses and the consumers that use them, but they cost lives downstream, not to mention hundreds of thousands of dollars in removing them from storm drains and the damage they do to recycling machinery right here in Athens. It is critically important that we begin to incorporate the cost of these items post-consumer, which is why I'm urging the mayor and commission to enact a plastic bag fee here in Athens. Bag fee ordinances are popping up all over the country and the world as people are starting to realize the damage that is being done by these insidious and largely unnecessary items. And the results are actually very substantial, almost overnight. In San Jose, for example, they enacted a bag fee, I believe it was 15 cents, and they saw reduced plastic bag litter in 86% of their storm drains within a month. One study in Ireland indicated that they had reduced the plastic bag litter in their streets by as much as 95%. These are real results that happened basically overnight, all thanks to 15 or 25 cents per bag. We have responsibility to be better stewards of the environment, something that is regretfully underrepresented in meetings like this and at the sales counter where critical decisions are being made. We can continue to remediate, to recycle what we have, adopt highways, and volunteer litter cleanups. But what we're doing is spending huge amounts of money to treat a symptom of a problem that can be solved for a fraction of the cost. We've done the research. I'm here with Bag the Bag UGA. We've spoken to several commissioners here as well. And we know that a bag fee is right for Athens. One word: plastics. They're not going away anytime soon because that's not how they're made, and neither are we. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak with us? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and this is the time when the mayor and the staff and our commissioners can bring things to us. I get the pleasure of being first. And the first thing I want to say tonight is that I had the honor of being a participant in Reverend Archibald Killian's funeral service today. Reverend Killian was a lifelong fighter for equality and freedom, things we're talking about tonight. And I just want to send our love and respect to his family from me personally and from our community as a whole. And then, I'd also like to announce that applications, we talked about our boards and authorities, applications are now being accepted for positions on the ACC, Industrial Development Authority, Board of Health, Board of Elections, Library Board, and Construction Board of Appeals. And applications can be made online. The deadline is Friday, November 11. And Commissioner Wright, as in her capacity as chair of our audit committee, has requested a committee review of leisure services, scholarship program, and cost recovery as related to the Green Play Report and the internal audit report on the summer programs. Someone put that into our government operations committee. And the last thing I have tonight is our TSPLOST Citizens Board. I'm doing something with great reluctance and sadness. I ask all the commissioners to make two nominations to this committee, and then the mayor had two nominations. There are going to be 22 people on this committee. And in respect to the 21 members, other members who are going to be on this committee who need to be able to have a respectful and thoughtful process in making the recommendations for the TSPLOST ballot, I'm going to reject one of the nominations in light of the very immature and disruptive behavior tonight. And that's one of the third district nominees, and I'll announce the rest of them. I'll ask our third district commissioner to bring another name forward. I hope it will be a minority. And if you need some help in identifying a person, I think I can help you. The members of this committee, the mayor's appointments are Bill Bland and Dr. Holly Ward, Commissioner One District from Commissioner Dickerson, Fred Harrison, and Kaori Sakamoto. Commissioner Sims, Willie Bolton, Homer Wilson, Commissioner Link, Dr. Jennifer Rice, that's District Three, Commissioner Wright, District Four, Alice Kinman, Brian Malloy, Commissioner Bailey in District Five, Lauren Blase, and Elliot Caldwell, Commissioner Neesmith in District Six, Denise Ricks and Madeline Van Dyke, Commissioner Bell in District Seven, Corbett Chandler and Tommy Jackson, Commissioner Harrod in District Eight, Buck Bacon and Sue Plaxton, Commissioner Gertz, District Nine, Mildred Beck and Tress Anna, or as we know her, Tress Small, Commissioner Hamby, District Ten, John Jeffries, and Erin Redman. And these are the people who will come together to bring forth the language and the projects that will be considered for the TSPLOST vote. And they will also hopefully help us educate the community on the need for, the things that they're bringing forward, the need for this 1% tax. So thank you all for bringing some very good people to the commission. I think we're going to see some good work done. And with that, I will ask Mr. Williams if he has anything to bring to us.
No reports, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Berryman?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one item. This is a follow-up to the executive session that you had at the agenda-setting meeting, and it is a request to the mayor and commission to approve authorization to accept payment to the unified government from the general contractor's surety in the amount of $360,000 to resolve pending litigation arising from the Sandy Creek Nature Center construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Berryman. Anyone make a motion to support that?
Madam Madam, for acceptance of the settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Madam Alter?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, now we'll get any, whatever our commissioners want to bring to us. We're going to start with Commissioner Bailey, go clockwise around the room, and end with Commissioner Neesmith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have much to say, but I think it was very poignant, that, a very good point made, that we need to be more inclusive on our boards, authorities, and commissions. And I'm going to make an effort, a serious effort in the future, to help make sure that anybody that I suggest, if we have more diverse candidates. And I think we should be doing that. That's the right thing, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan?
I'll start off with plastics. I just love the way that guy said that. I believe that the work that the audit committee is doing with our Office of Operational Analysis is working as well with the manager on improvements that we can do in communicating details about our current over 30 boards, authorities, and commissions that we have, so that information about them, and, and thank you tonight for discussing the ones that are currently available to apply for, so that improvements are coming along on that note in the next year. And it's, the topic tonight, it's very tough. I wish I had the magic wand that people claim I have to make it all go away. I really, I really wish I did. That's all.
Ms.
I want to address something that Mr. Flanagan brought up. He brought it up in the context of the infill housing ordinance that is working its way through the system. And he noted that there are specific neighborhoods that are excluded from the protections of the infill housing ordinance. And those neighborhoods are overwhelmingly majority-minority neighborhoods. There's a general belief in this community that our zoning policy, our housing policies are set up to systematically push African-American and low-income folks further and further away from downtown. And that just might, that might just be an effect of some of these policies, but we know that it's happening. And as long as we don't take steps to reverse that effect, then it's a pretty deliberate effect. We have the opportunity to protect some of these neighborhoods, to implement some affordable housing policies, to maybe tweak some zoning here and there. It's not that hard to do. We have study after study that shows that we need to do these things. We need to create more affordable housing. We need to protect some of our single-family neighborhoods and protect moderate-income single-family housing. And as long as we do not take those opportunities, then that general belief that we are pushing these folks out of town is not a general belief, it's the reality. So I would advocate for us taking a good, hard look at our zoning and our housing policy as it relates to our in-town older neighborhoods and making a real change and reversing some of the effects of these policies that have been longstanding.
Mr. Gertz?
Good night, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Sims?
I'd like to say kudos to our police department riding by there last night on Halloween. At the police station, the lights were flashing, and the young people were getting out with the trunker treat. And they did a wonderful job. I was, like, I was on my way to Walmart to get candy that I hadn't gotten and found out that I only had seven people show up at the house. So kids at church Sunday will get another treat because it ain't staying at my house.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yeah, a couple of things, just because there were some comments about this. I mean, I think it's wrong to say that we weren't listening. I think there were a lot of options that were presented, or there are a lot of options available to us, and we had a one-sided view because we have people who are very passionate about what they want to see happen. But I think that's short-sighted for our community. But I think that's short-sighted for our community, that we need to open up and look at all the options. I don't profess to know the answer, and I don't think anybody outside, on the other side of the rail, knows the answer to this problem yet. But it's very emotional, it's very politically charged, and the only way to really deal with this is to get it out of that arena. And that's why the manager's office has been directed to look at this. I mean, Commissioner Gertz thought that as well, because that's what his CDO said. So I think it's important that we, you know, look at this in an objective view, look at all the options, and then bring it back for feedback, both from us and the public. I mean, we're not going to be giving input until he brings something before us as well. So I think that's important to remember. A couple of things I do want to mention, and just because it was brought up, I think it's pertinent to understand, I made a huge effort, and I would just have to say that I probably made a bigger effort to do this and be more inclusive in my district than I would have had I not been involved in this Community Economic Development Strategy Initiative. My district is made up of about 67% white. I found two very highly-involved individuals who are not white in my district. Fred Harrison, who is an African-American, he lives in the eastern most part of our district, a very rural part. And although he's going to be looking at countywide issues, he understands the issues that are happening in the rural parts of our community, and that's why I put him on there. And I think, you know, it's important because I think those areas of our community have been sort of left out of the conversation. Ms. Sakamoto is a young Japanese woman who is raising, along with her husband, is raising a pre-teen son. She lives off of Highway 78, which is a major corridor, in that Timber Creek subdivision, which is a terrible place if y'all ever got to get out of at any given time. So I think she has a lot of network, again, looking at what her opportunity to reach into other areas of the community, very engaged in the community. So I think she's, you know, both these people make really good additions to the advisory board. And like I said, I made an extra effort to make sure I found somebody that did not fall into the same category that we normally put people, you know, that normally we have people serving in. I do want to mention two other, or three other things real quick. East Athens Business Leaders Association is having their second annual expo at Tuckston United Methodist Church this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. It is free admission, it's lots of fun, usually there's free food, there's giveaways. Commissioner Herrick is going to be out of town, but Commissioner Sims and I are both going to have a table. So y'all come say hey to us, and maybe I'll talk him into giving me some of that candy he has left over to put on our table. I also want to thank Traffic Engineering for the work they did at Lexington Road and Witt Davis. We have new lane markings, overhead signage, because we had a lot of people trying to make dual-left turns when one of those lanes was supposed to be going directly into Walmart and the other turning on to Lexington. And also a pitch to them for working with DOT. Again, something that I don't think we recognize enough, DOTs can be difficult to deal with, but our staff is working with them and has made great strides. They reconfigured the left-turn lanes off of Lexington so that when you're sitting at the light, either heading east or heading west, and you're sitting in a turn lane, either turning on to Witt Davis or Lexington, you can actually see the cars on that coming on the lane and not hope that you're going to make the turn before somebody hits you. So that's a huge deal, and I really appreciate it. The final thing I'll mention is, if you guys have not been out to City of Wernerville in a while, this past weekend, they completed a mural on the side of the old Spratlin garage, and it's really pretty. I actually put it on my Facebook page. Y'all go to Sharon for Athens on Facebook and see it. But they had artwork from 60 Wernerville Elementary School students. I think they were in fourth and fifth grade. And Cameron Bliss, who is the mayor's wife, who's also a renowned artist, she projected it up onto the, well, she organized it and then projected it onto the side of the building. And then volunteers went out and painted with paintbrushes and paint that was donated by both Lowe's and Walmart from our community, and painted it and completed it last weekend. She went back and did the artistic thing, all of us who went outside of the line, she had to fix. So, but anyway, it's a really, it's a really pretty piece, and I'm really excited about it, and it's in my district. So I hope y'all will try to find some time to go out there. That's all.
It's nice to hear some nice news. Mr. Herrick.
Did you say Mr. Gertz or Mr. Herrick?
She said Herrick.
Okay, sorry. I guess I cleaned my ears out. I'd like to follow up a little bit on what Commissioner Dickerson said. As I said before, I don't think there's anybody behind the rail that doesn't think that what we were talking about tonight is unimportant. I will take, I usually don't do this, but I will take exception to six of us being specifically called out for allegedly not caring about this. Going back to the issue of the TESPLOS committee appointments for a moment, I asked two, I do not have a particular...
Ma'am, we're behind the rail for discussion now, I'm sorry.
I have a predominantly white district, too. I asked two African-Americans, those are the two of the first three people I thought of, to try and put on as my nominees, and as it turned out, neither of those individuals worked out. I have a 30-year record of fighting for social justice. When I was in college, myself and about five of my buddies organized a campaign that got our university to divest from apartheid South Africa, and we are talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. I've worked on the ad hoc living wage committee on campus, and low wages on campus mostly affect African-American and other minority people, and women. So I will put my record of fighting for social justice against anybody that is calling me out for being weak on this. I thoroughly reject that. What I think we need to do, and what we said we were going to do this evening, and I think all 10 of us are in agreement, is that this is a very complicated issue, and we need to find something that works for Athens. That's what we were saying. Give our staff the time to do the research. They were listening. They were in the same room as everybody else in this chamber tonight. Give our staff the opportunity to take the comments, I'm sure they didn't have their ears closed, to take the comments, to take what we, as elected officials, have tasked them with doing. And although the motion didn't pass unanimously, I know that all 10 people behind the rail think that the issue of dealing with the bars and dealing with some of the other things that we talked about are important. There was a minor difference on how to go about doing that, but I don't think anybody behind the rail has a difference of opinion in terms of what we need to address in terms of this community. Two other things, a little bit less heated perhaps. I would also like to second what Commissioner Dickerson said about the East Athens Business Leaders Association. They're doing great work. They do have their expo, their second business expo this Saturday at Tuckston United Methodist Church at 4175 Lexington Road. So if you are, that's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. If you are an east-side businessperson, or if you are an east-side resident, or if you are not an east-side resident, please come out. We have lots of fabulous businesses on the east side of town, and I think it's great what they are doing to really bring some attention to the economic opportunities and diversity that we have on the east side of town. The second thing relates to what Mr. McConnell said, because it's something that I've been reading about, too, is the issue of drought. We are, obviously, our rainfall levels are low. If you look at the map for Georgia, and particularly North Georgia, this is a particular issue. So I would like to get some information from the manager's office in terms of where we are, in terms of our drought response protocols, because I know that there is a system that we need to go through. Part of that relates to what we can do locally, part of it relates to instructions, I guess, for want of a better word, that we get from the state. So if I could just get, or not just me, but everybody could get an update on where we are on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Andy, before we move on, I can give you a little bit of information on that because I serve on the Royal Coney Water Basin Authority. And the authority has not felt a need to expand conservation measures right now because we're so close to the winter months, and the thought is, is that we're going to have that regeneration of the water over the winter months. But it's something that's being watched continuously through that group. Herrick, do you have anything to add to that? Because he serves on that.
Here Creek is at, it's 690 feet, and at Pool Pool, it's 695. So it is low, but only about five feet.
Ms. Bell.
I'm not happy. I'm not happy at all with the way we were dealt with, the six of us, that I lost a lot of sleep over the last several weeks trying to deal with what we were doing tonight. I'm the oldest commissioner in this room. I came through the years of the beginning of the civil rights, the heavy-handed, the schools, and I remember some of the, I remember Lionel Penn being shot and killed. You know, that's a moment you don't forget. What I dealt with was what we needed to decide about tonight to move forward. No, we may not have it all together in one package, but it's the beginning of a journey to try to write what we need to do for Athens Clark County. And yes, I took it very serious. No, I was not a part of the defined option, but that doesn't bother me, the fact that I wanted the right things for the right reasons for us to do tonight. And I feel like we've made the right choices. No, we couldn't make everybody happy at all, but I'm glad that we've made a decision. I'm sorry that there was some behavior that was inappropriate regarding it. I don't like disrespect. We give a lot of time with what we do, and what we do for the right reasons for this community. And it hurts when we are treated that way, disrespectful. But I hope we can put aside tonight, I'm grateful that we've got a management that can help us move forward now in what we need to do in our next turn, and we will look to a brighter star at the end of the journey. And Athens has so much, so much, and this is the right direction we need to go. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
I'm good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I want to be supportive of all 10 commissioners, and specifically the six that have been sort of called out, and say, I know that every one of you wanted to go forward with this and have for a long time. So I am sorry that others don't see that. You're just not as loud as some of the other ones of us. And we're going to move forward now. I'm just fine with what we're doing, and I look forward to the result. On another topic, there's the Athens West Corridor Group, West is Best. They have formed, they have formed a SPLOS committee, and so I'm just reaching out to anyone in West Athens, particularly along what we call the Athens West Corridor, with any ideas or questions that you might have. You can contact me, jerry.neesmith@athensclarkcounty.com, and we'll take it forward. And last but not least, plastics. You know, we have, we have a stormwater fee ordinance, which is very, very, it's not good. And it's not good because it doesn't reward people for managing stormwater. You can put all the stormwater off your roof into a cistern, and you pay the same fee as anybody else that has that size roof. You can put in water gardens, it doesn't matter. You get a little bit of break if you happen to live along particular river riparian buffers, you get a little bit of a break. You know, what's going to happen is the state's probably going to try, at least I know of somebody, who's going to try to change our, the way we do stormwater fees and the way we calculate it, to make them more fair. And by the way, if we have, if we charge people for stormwater based upon their impermeable surface, why can't we charge people for using plastic bags to discourage that, which is also a serious, serious problem? And it affects more people than just Athens Clark County. Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn. Good night, all in favor.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.